Good evening and welcome to the June 10th, 2024 City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington? Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson? And Mayor Ross?
I'm here. Councilmembers, may we, I believe Washington has asked because be excused from the workshop. Do we want to go ahead and motion excusing Councilmember Washington?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilmember Watten and second by Councilmember Christensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Quite of order, I think that was Councilmember Holloway, Mayor Pro Tim.
No.
It was just like, oh, you deferred to your council. Okay, no, I just want to make sure we got there.
I feel no pride of ownership on those.
Okay, so Councilmember Washington is excused. And we heard anything about Councilmember Johnson? Want to go ahead and excuse him at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilmember Christensen to excuse Councilmember Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And Councilmember Johnson is also excused from the special roundtable. So, we now move to our first item, which is to approve the agenda. And tonight, this portion is the Washington City's Insurance Authority training. So, all in favor or any discussion regarding the agenda? Say none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? It is unanimous and the agenda is approved. And so, I will introduce, our speaker tonight is Ann Bennett, who is the Executive Director of WCIA. And she will provide the training. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me. We titled this City Council Do's and Don'ts. I will hear from many councils, you say a lot of don'ts. Where are the do's? But I will tell you, there's do's in there. I think this training works best when it's interactive. I love questions. I want you to challenge me to some of what we're talking about.
We're not going to do that.
Oh. I like this, I like it already. So, and I also have encouraged David, your city attorney, to jump in on anything as well. So, with that, I'll kind of move forward. An FYI about me, I've been with WCIA for 28 years. And I remember the most exciting thing about Snoqualmie was when X-Files was filming here. And they had a risk management question and we all said, can we go? Can we go? Can we go? So, I've seen this town, this city, grow and change quite a bit in my 28 years. So, I always liked coming out here. So, who are we? Um, Washington City's Insurance Authority is actually a self-insuring risk pool. So, the original nine members of WCIA created us in 1981 to share risk. Because cities are a bad risk that insurance companies don't like. So, they created us. We're actually a municipal entity. And we have now over 167 members, cities across the state. And your neighbors would be Issaquah, Samaish, Covington. I'm trying to think around here, but we have most of the cities in the Puget Sound area. We don't have really big cities. We don't have Bellevue, we don't have Seattle. But we have Kirkland, we have Woodinville. And again, you have been a member Snoqualmie since 1996, I mean 86, I'm sorry, 86. So, dating myself, that was my senior year in high school, so that's why I should remember it was 86. So, the nice thing about WCIA is it's run by the members. It's a membership organization. So, while we perform kind of an insurance function, it is run by the members. And every single member has a delegate. And that's Dina, is the delegate to WCIA. And members actually get to decide what this organization does. We have full board meetings where every single member has a vote. And they get to decide on coverages, on budget, all of that. The one thing that's a talent of risk pooling is risk management. So, when you buy your auto insurance, they don't say, hey, let me give you all kinds of ways for you to reduce your risk and not have an accident in the first place. That's what risk pooling does. You'll find on our website, we have all kinds of trainings, this being one of them. We also offer an assigned risk management representative to every city. Who, they come out, they do playground inspections, they do audits. We call them an audit, but it's really a best practices review. And anytime there's an issue, you can call our risk management rep and say, hey, what's the risk if? So, when I was a risk management rep, I had a phone call, hey, Ann, I just want to ask you a coverage question. If we send two teenagers to Eastern Washington in a city-owned vehicle, are they insured with you? And the first thing I said is, two teenagers going to Eastern Washington unsupervised is a bigger risk than whether or not the car is insured. So, let's chat a little bit more, but it's those kind of questions that can happen. We also have, our rates are completely transparent. It's interesting because as you saw, the insurance industry now has to explain rate increases. Our members get all of the background. There's, our rates are set by an actuary, an outside actuary. But it's fully transparent as to where those rates came from. And members actually vote on that. We have a committee set up to decide rates. And then, our executive board goes ahead and votes on those rates. So, again, any type of issue is usually member-driven. Coverage decisions, those are made by me, the executive director. My goal is to look to find coverage, not deny coverage. So, we're governed, like every insurer, by a coverage document. But I'm not looking to find that fine tooth of a way to deny coverage to the member. I'm trying my best to find the ability to give coverage. So, what do we provide you? We provide you $20 million of liability coverage per occurrence. So, that's auto liability, that's police liability, that's land use errors and emissions, council liability. Also, just general liability, trips and falls on sidewalks. So, things like that are what we cover for 20 million. You can also participate, which the city does, in our property program and our first-party auto. But we also buy cyber coverage and pollution coverage for our members. So, that's in a nutshell, who we are and what we do at WCIA. So, how are you going to avoid liability? Well, here's the good news, this is what all councils want to hear. As an individual, you receive absolute immunity for your legislative acts. So, I can't sue you for a legislative decision personally. And this has come up, where we had members, council members sued individually. And that was done as a tactic to get a decision changed. And we actually were awarded by a court over $100,000 in sanctions. Because it, the law was clear, you can't do that. Now, that's when you're acting as a body as a whole and when you're legislating. And so, as we talk through this training, you'll hear me talk about some liability and I'll say, you can be sued for that. There are certain areas where you can trip into liability when it's not legislation. So, adoption of budgets, ordinances, resolutions, you can't be sued personally. You have absolute immunity.
So, can we hold for a second?
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Because prior sitting of this council was named as blatant in a case. Logic being to move it to a federal court versus a local court. There is recourse for san, I don't understand the sanction.
Are sued as an individual, not, you know, the city council as a whole.
Each council member was named.
It depends on what the allegation was. So, if it was something during your legislative activities, then it would, you would be immune. Depends on, I'll give you the example I got sanctions on. It was a land use decision, it was a zoning decision. And it was to zone an area as historic. And nobody liked, well, people who wanted to develop in that area didn't like the decision. So, they named the council members individuals. And the court held that was zoning is a legislative activity for which council members could not be sued individually. So, I don't know which suit.
And I'm not going to go into it.
Yeah, and there are areas where you can be named. And we'll kind of go through that, there are times when that can happen. So, not knowing exactly what the allegations are, it's, I would have to dig a little deeper. So, land use, the good news is, I understand you're pretty built out. You don't have a lot of land use issues to get into. So, I'm not going to go too far into this, but you do have a hearing examiner, which is our biggest risk management tool that we recommend. There are times when councils have, in the past, not used hearing examiners. And you can really get yourself into trouble there. There's something called the appearance of fairness doctrine, arbitrary and decision, arbitrary and capricious decision-making. So, that's where councils get into trouble, but you've already risk managed that. What I will say is, I understand you do sometimes sit as quasi-judicial on some code enforcement. So, David will let you know when that's going to occur. And the appearance of fairness doctrine, basically, anytime you sit quasi-judicial, which is sitting like a judge, you have to be fair and impartial. Who decides who's fair and impartial? Well, the law always does this really fun thing, says, to a reasonable person. A reasonable person would believe you're fair and impartial. So.
Do we get to pick the person?
No.
No. No. No, you don't get to. So.
It's a judge if it ever comes to a question.
Pretty much. And what a reasonable person think, in this situation, you can be fair and impartial. And what I'll tell you is, a lot of times, especially in some of the cities I've dealt with, maybe they ran and were part of the anti-growth movement. So, if they're sitting in a land use decision as quasi-judicial, it comes into question. So, if you think you can't be fair and impartial, then you can always refuse yourself and say, I can't sit fair and impartial. So, we can do a whole training on that, that's a much bigger topic, but I do want to bring that up. And I know if you're going to go into quasi-judicial, I know David will tell you that. And he will probably say, you know, does anybody feel they cannot sit and be impartial?
City Attorney Lanahan?
So, just to follow up on that, in the time that I've been working with this city, I have found a few things in your code that are a little bit anachronistic and that many cities have delegated almost all quasi-judicial decisions to the hearing examiner. Snoqualmie has a few things that are still council decision-maker for quasi-judicial things. So, I might be working with the mayor and staff to identify those and see if the council wants to revisit that and maybe send those types of decisions back to the hearing examiner in case that's something you'd prefer to not have to wrestle with. But those are all decisions you can make down the road. I just wanted to flag that you do have some things in their code that are still council decisions that most cities have delegated to the hearing examiner.
So, I do want to say, be careful, even if you don't have a lot of land use exposure. What, I have a couple cases here about don't exert, insert yourself into the process. The first one is Westmark versus Burian. This was a huge case that we actually got a $10 million verdict against us. And really what it involved, it was the building of apartments on a very unstable bluff. And the city of Burian inherited the project from King County when they incorporated. And it was a 10-year delay of a project. So, our view of this case was that this was a developer who didn't want to follow the environmental impact rules that were set. They were delaying, delaying, delaying. The problem was, there were all kinds of statements by the council on the record saying, we don't want apartments in Burian, we want you staff to do anything you can to stop this project. So, what happened at trial is it came through that rather than the case we thought we had, which was, this is an apartment complex on a very unstable slope, that we, you know, issued our determination of significance, they got to go out and get an environmental impact statement. We thought, you know, the delay tactic is on them because they didn't want to do it. What the jury came back with is, the council wanted this project delayed and the city sat on it for too long. And did put roadblocks after roadblocks because of the political pressure. So, we get a $10 million verdict. What does anybody do when they get a $10 million verdict? Appeal. It's got to be wrong. Well, guess what? There is a Court of Appeals decision that exoriates the city and their council to the point where they were saying, this was intentional. They were sitting there talking about not having apartments, how can it not be anything but that? And so, the case we had became completely different because of some of the actions and statements by the council. There was actually a settlement at one point. And we, WCIA, had agreed to settle it for $200,000. And the council was just supposed to go ahead and approve certain things. I guess, you know, it was a whole list of items for the development to just move the project along. And that was probably about five years before trial. What happened is the council agreed to it and then backed out. And so, because the council backed out, then the settlement agreement that we had was litigated as, could they enforce the contract? The answer was no. And so, that also became evidence at the trial of bad faith, that there was a deal and it was backed out. The other case I want to tell you about, and this is, you know, kind of has a bigger impact than just land use, is Mission Springs versus City of Spokane. And I don't have Spokane. So, in the Mission Springs case, there was very controversial development going in. It had gone through the process, was approved, was about, they'd already issued grading permits, they're, you know, starting to build. So, what occurs is the citizens were not happy. Were not happy this was going through, even though the code, everything said, this is, you know, this needs to go through. What occurs is that the mayor invites the citizens to a meeting, not the developer, the citizens. And says, come on, you know, come to the next meeting. So, brings up an item, says, I want to put an item on the agenda. I want to ask the, at that time, development planning director, what's the status of this development? I'd like a report. So, development director starts talking, it's grading permits issued. And the mayor says, I want you to revoke those permits. The city attorney stands up, says, I don't recommend doing that. Now, what I don't know, and David, maybe you know, but I've never known why the city attorney didn't say, let's go into executive session.
Yeah.
But, they didn't. And so, this is, I always call this, the listen to your city attorney. Now, I think David would say, let's go into executive session. So, what happens is, the mayor says, I don't care what the city attorney says, I am directing you to stop. On the record, the city attorney says, if you do this, it is illegal in law, you are breaking the law. Now, again, on the record.
I would never say that in an open public meeting. We would go into executive session, and then I would say that very strongly.
Will you blink three times?
I've always curious why they didn't do that. But what ends up happening is, the mayor says, I don't care, revoke the permit, developer gets wind of it, lawsuit filed. And it went to court. And basically, their insurer, they, Spokane was insured by an insurance company. And they said, this is a criminal, illegal, knowing act, no coverage, no coverage. So, the city of Spokane was out on their own and there was a massive settlement. And basically, the settlement came about because the court ruled that this was a violation of state law and federal law. So, one of the kickers in federal law is something called an attorney fee shift. So, if you, you know, are the plaintiff in a federal case, your attorney gets to, if they prevail, gets to claim all of their attorney fees. And sometimes those are millions of dollars. So, there was a massive settlement in Mission Springs. I never heard exactly what that number was because there was lots of, well, well, we're suing the insurance company, but I just heard it was massive. So, I've never gotten that one, I haven't heard it from anyone. So, if anyone ever hears, let me know. I also want to quickly just mention development agreements. And the only reason I have this on here is, this has surprised some of our members. Development agreements are contracts. And depending on how these contract disputes are written, sometimes it will fall purely as a contract and a breach of a contract. And my coverage doesn't cover the contracts. So, I put that out there because we've had some members really surprised that they've been sued and it's under a breach of contract theory. Contract law is not tort law, I cover torts. And so, I just put that out there because that will not have coverage. And so, sometimes the city is on nothing for those. But before I move on from land use, any questions? This is an easy one because you guys are good, you don't have a lot of land use stuff.
I don't know if it's even safe to ask questions. Go to executive, keep everything unspoken.
So, personnel is an area that I've seen councils get themselves into trouble with. And what I would say is, you, as a council, are legislating, you're legislators. So, you set policy, you set budget. When it comes to individual personnel issues, that's the mayor's purview. And she will work with the city administrator on individual personnel issues. You never want to stray into that role. So, you know, managing an employee, hiring, firing, discipline, that's all under the mayor's responsibilities in concert with the city administrator. So, what I would say is, if there is an issue that you become aware of, and where this comes up sometimes is, hey, I'm driving down the road, there's an employee, I'm concerned about what I'm seeing happening. You have to let the city administrator know or the mayor know, there's a problem. Do not take matters into your own hands, which we have had. We've had council members go in and council employees, direct employees, that can get very sticky. I would also say harassment and discrimination is an area where I do see sometimes councils get involved in. You are held to the same standard as a city employee and you are held to the city policy on harassment discrimination. So, if you haven't seen it, I recommend you ask for a copy. Again, I think most of us know harassment discrimination through our own workplaces, our own personal experience. But this is an area where you can be sued individually. And we have had this, where we've had council members inappropriately touching employees. We've had council members asking employees out on dates. That's not okay, you're held to the same standard. If an employee comes to you and says, I want to report an, something, I don't want to report it. I want to talk to you, I have a concern, I'm being harassed. I want to tell you this confidentially, but don't do anything about it and don't tell anyone. Guess what? That's not possible. You have an obligation to report that. And you would report that through, and I'd have to look at your policy. Usually, it's HR, maybe the mayor, if it's about the mayor, the city attorney. So, you want to report it and you need to tell that person, I'm sorry, I can't keep that confidential. I am in a leadership role at the city, I'm not going to go and spread it out there, but I do have to report this. I have had situations where I had a council member who was inappropriately touching employees. We said, stop, please don't do that. Don't, you know, it got to a point where we had to, you know, well, the mayor basically said, you can't talk, be in the room with an employee alone, you know, stay away. And then, it was used against that person in their election, their reelection, because it came out that there had been an investigation, that this person was no longer allowed to interact directly with employees because of personal space and inappropriate touching of employees. So, again, know, know the law. I would say, know your policy. And if you need a refresher, we have it up, one up on our website, you can watch, under our training, if it's been a while. But again, I would say, this is an area where you don't, I mean, I've had trials of personnel matters where council members were testifying because they liked this employee and they didn't want them fired or they didn't like what happened. And it tears the city apart. It really does. And, you know, you may disagree, but, you know, that's the role of the mayor and the administrator. And if they make that decision, even, you know, you can talk to them individually. But if you start campaigning and disrupting, that blows up every time. There's nothing good that comes out of it. So, I just let you know that. So, my next one is negligent misrepresentation. And this is kind of an interesting, this is a legal term. So, I'll describe it in the legal sense and then I'll give you an example and then we'll keep talking through it. So, negligent misrepresentation is when you make a specific assurance or promise and somebody relies on that assurance or promise to their detriment. So, you're a city council member, you know, you can be looked upon as a speaking agent for the city. So, the example I have, and this happened to one of our cities, their whole downtown is covered, all their businesses are cedar shingle, it's really cute, quaint town. And one lunch hour, staff was at lunch and the mayor happened to be, you know, in their office. And a business owner came by and said, hey, you know, my cedar is failing. Can I go ahead, tear that down and just do stucco because it's killing me? I can't afford to put it up there, I'm going to go out of business, I'm going to lose my business. You know my reputation in the community, you've got to save me. And what did the mayor say? We appreciate you, we're going to save you, go ahead and do that. So, business owner takes down all the shingle, starts putting up their stucco. And guess what happens? Code enforcement says, uh-uh, violation, red tags it, you need to tear this all down and put up cedar. You are in violation of our code. And so, what do you think he said?
Mayor told me I could.
Mayor told me I could. I had a, it told me, I made an assurance I could do this. So, who do you think paid to tear down all the stucco and put up new cedar? Because the old cedar wasn't taken down, we did. It was a negligent misrepresentation. So, what I would say is, be very careful about making specific assurances or promises. This is where you have a staff. Staff are the experts. So, if somebody brings you a question and says, hey, I'm curious, can I do this? Can I do that? Is it legal, is it not? You can say, you know what? I can give you the right person to talk to. You have staff that are the experts. So, refer specific questions to them. And feel free to, you know, if you want to follow up with a citizen, hey, did you get your question answered? But again, let that process play out, that you're talking to, the citizen is talking to the appropriate staff member. You don't want to take matters into your own hands. I did have a situation where a council member didn't like how a certain area was growing out of control. And so, you know, grass, weeds, and they said, you know, this is just really unattractive on my walks at night. And so, a bunch of citizens said, yeah, we agree with you, you need to do something. So, do you think he went to staff and said, hey, can we mow this? No, he took his mower down there, started mowing it. Guess what? It was protected tidal land and it was also Indian protected tidal land. And they had to pay a fortune to restore it. Because this was there for the protection of salmon. So, again, don't take matters into your own hands, just ask a question. So, again, this one can be a little tricky because you feel, you know, your constituents are coming to you. You know, they want to know, but you have staff. You have the ability to say, I don't know that answer. And that's what I do. If I get a question and I don't know the answer, what do I say? I don't, I don't know, but I do know somebody who does. I don't have the answer. Let me, let me find out. And you can talk to the city administrator, talk to the mayor, say, who can I contact? Or I have this question, who should I refer to? So, again, any questions on this one? Because this one can be a little tricky. Guys are quiet. All right. Defamation. Here, here's what I will tell you. In general, you're given very broad discretion with regard to matters of legislative concerns. You're here to talk about issues, to have discussions. Where this comes in is, you have to be very careful with individuals. There are some individuals that you can talk about negatively. I don't recommend it because I think it gets you into other areas. It could be harassment, discrimination. But, and that's why I say, are they a public official? Because there's some, there's some leeway with certain public officials. But even then, it's tricky. So, I would say, you know, just know, any untruth can give rise to liability. So, I'll give you an example of a case that came down against Spokane County. It involved a sheriff, if you guys know Sheriff Ozzy. He basically terminated, well, one of his, I think it was a sergeant, if I'm not mistaken, terminated him and then held a press conference. And in that press conference, talked about all of his reasons for termination. This sergeant sued him for defamation. The sergeant and his wife received a verdict of $19 million and his job back.
So, does Spokane pay for anything other than lawsuits?
Spokane County.
Oh.
Spokane County, and I don't know about the county. But I do know. But I do know that the county, they were a member of the county risk pool. And like us, they carry twenty million dollars in coverage. Well, because this had a fee shift in it. It ended up being about twenty-six million and the county themselves had to shoulder the additional monies. So it's interesting because that case kind of has some continuance. I've seen it in the Court of Appeals. With regard to the newspapers and the media coverage where they, you know, they were going after the media for covering it and him having a press conference. But again, if you hear these numbers, they should scare you. And unfortunately, this is our new normal. Our new normal is the state got a hundred million dollar verdict. In harassment discrimination, the University of Washington Police Department, three. Officers sued and it was a fifteen million dollar verdict for harassment discrimination. So the numbers are astounding now. In Washington, we don't have tort caps. Some states have these, I call it this magical world. Where there's tort caps on how much a jury can award, that is out the door. And we are now in a world where we have what's called nuclear verdicts. Where they are tens of millions of dollars. And so, you know, this is why we come out and this is why we are training everybody to say. Please don't get yourself into trouble because it is big when, when these things go to trial, unfortunately. So this is an area of public works and this is where I'm seeing big, big, big numbers. And indefensible cases based on case law. And this is road design. So I have a term, this is an AN term, political engineering. And political engineering is basically when a city decides to put in a traffic control device. A traffic treatment because they think it's a good idea. So when you get into road design, it is effectively an engineering malpractice case. So they hire an expert that says this engineering's. We did this study and we think it should have been a stop sign. We think there should have been better lighting. And we have an engineering study that says, no, we studied it. A stop sign does not meet the warrant requirements at that location. And then, you know, we're off to the races. So what I would say is the big reason you get sued in road design. Is the amount of injury and the ability of the party to pay, the party who hit them. So often these come about because somebody is uninsured or has low limits. And so they're looking, it's called deep pocket liability. We call it, you know, they're searching for the deep pocket. And you as a city are the deep pocket. And that's because of something called joint and several liability. And joint and several liability is not something a jury gets to hear about. And what joint and several says is that when you have multiple defendants. And the plaintiff themselves is fault free. If there's at least one percent of negligence afforded to any defendant, you can collect the entire amount. From that defendant. So what occurs is that if I can just get one percent against Noqualmie for that crosswalk. I can get tens of millions of dollars. I mean, I'm talking head injuries. It's usually not whiplash. It's. Fatalities, it's head injuries, it's brain damage, it's quadriplegia that we're dealing with. So these are very interesting cases because if I can't defend the decision to put in a crosswalk. Then they're going to find a way to find liability. And let me tell you a recent case we had. Where the traffic engineer and the mayor who was a traffic engineer. Go out, look at an area and say, oh, we should put in a crosswalk. This, this is a lot. There's a lot of, you know, traffic. There's this, there's that pedestrian. Engineering wise, it was the correct treatment. There was nothing wrong with where they put that crosswalk in. So what did we say? And, and the person, the person walking while in a crosswalk, they're not force fields. The person walking walked right in front of the car. And the car said, I know there's a crosswalk there. I just never saw that person. It was a brain injury case. And so we filed a motion. We're saying they can't show anything wrong with this crosswalk. They don't even have an engineer to say there's anything wrong with it because they can't. What do you think the judge said? Well, you guys just decided on your own. There wasn't an engineering study. I won't dismiss the case. It's going to go to trial. Because you didn't perform. Now to me, there's nothing wrong with the crosswalk. But because they didn't do it according to what normal procedure is, the judge wouldn't dismiss the case. We settled out. It went to trial against the driver, twenty-two million dollar verdict. So we're glad we settled out, but these are, these types of cases are really dangerous for us. What I will say comes in a lot with these cases is when you have a horrible accident. And you are, I want to do something. The question of that something is for your traffic engineer. And you want to make sure you're avoiding inflammatory statements. We had. An accident, it was a fatality, nothing wrong with the crosswalk. But after the fact, the council was going on the record, this is an area where it's got a ton of accidents. We need to slow people down. We need to do something. How many accidents you think were at that location? What do you think the speed limit was? Twenty, twenty-five? And the driver said, the sun was in my eyes. Guess who got deposed in that lawsuit? The council member. Guess who? I have to say, you know, how did you know this? What did you, what information did you rely on? Where's your engineering degree? We get it, you know, there should be better lighting. Well, again, that's an engineering treatment. So the last thing you want to be is a witness. It's not fun. I've been one. It's not fun. It is not fun to be deposed. It's, you know, you're, you're setting people up for disappointment because what's happening is you're saying there's a problem and there isn't. The other thing that I would say is in general. You know, if you think there's something that needs to be done, listen to your engineer, listen to your staff. I had a mayor tell me, I could share this story. That there was a council meeting and twenty people came in and said, we want a stop sign at this location. I, you know, this, we have to have a stop sign. Because people are flying through this neighborhood. There's kids playing. We need to slow it down. Put a stop sign on. So he said to me, he goes, Anne, I actually went in and told the traffic engineer, I know it's not warranted, but I want a stop sign. And he said, it went in and next thing you knew, he said, I had two hundred people. At a council meeting saying, do you know the havoc that is being wreaked behind this stop sign? People are, someone's going to get hurt. Because there's all kinds of conflict and backup created by this stop sign. So he said, I took it out. And he said, use it in your training. I immediately said, I, you know, I should have listened to the engineer because there's a reason for that. So again, if something happens and you want to do something, talk to your city engineer. And we may say, hold off on that measure.
Through a city attorney, Linehan.
Just to expand on that a little bit, I have two. Examples burned into my brain of situations where. A council member, very well intentioned, I'm sure, in the middle of public comment, when somebody was talking about a specific street. Said, that street is a fatality waiting to happen. Thinking they were defending the safety of the public. Well, guess what exhibit number one is going to be? When somebody gets hurt on that street, it's going to be the council member saying, that street is a fatality waiting to happen. Good luck defending, even if there was absolutely nothing wrong with the street, even if there was nothing wrong with the intersection. That is going to be an evidence that the city will never be able to defend. Even if the councilor has no engineering background, is just trying to, you know, show. Concern for public safety, that's a comment that should be made to the city engineer, not to. The world in a public council meeting and then find out, is it really a fatality waiting to happen? Is it really a safety concern? Or are there good reasons why it's designed the way it is?
And that's a great example of, you know, if you can. Talk to staff, why, why, you know, what's going on here? Crosswalks, I will tell you, while everybody likes a crosswalk, they are very dangerous. More people are killed in crosswalks than they are jaywalking. Because people think it's a force field and it's not. Mid-block crosswalks are very dangerous. And, you know, that was always my risk management advice is if you have a mid-block crosswalk, paint it out. Because every single time that, that is a conflict waiting to happen. So again, let the engineers know, hey, I've seen this. I'm kind of concerned. What with the, is there a better treatment here? I will get, next slide is going to get into this. I wouldn't put it in writing because that's a good bit of what you write. So it's usually, just say, hey, can I, can I have a moment of your time? Can you give me a call? Want to find out about this. Because we have had things used, emails used against us, believe it or not. But again, I, I also want to talk a little bit about what's called subsequent remedial measure. So you have an incident and you go in and you put a different treatment, even though it's not warranted, you put a different treatment in. Technically by law, a subsequent remedial measure cannot be introduced as evidence. That there was something wrong. But it can be introduced to determine or prove or show feasibility that it could have been done. So guess what? What comes in every single time? The subsequent remedial measure. So, you know, there are times when you wanted to do something and we may say, slow down. Don't recommend it. I, I would not, you know, it, by all means, if there is an absolute hazard, we're not going to stand in your way. But if it's something, eh, we could make a safe road safer. And there's litigation, we may say, you know what, maybe, maybe hold off a little bit. Because it's going to be used against you. So it's not that we're saying, don't make a safe road safer. We agree with that. May just be, you know, hold off on that a little bit. So any questions on this one? Because this is a big area for us right now. All right. Uh, this is my plea, do not leak executive session information. Councils that leak executive session information. And it does no good. Resist the temptation to share. There's a reason you're in exec session. It's because to be out in the public would be detrimental to the city. What do I mean by that? You're talking about real estate. So I'm going to go buy a house. And I'm talking to my husband about what my first offer should be, how high do I want to go? You know, what do we think? What do we think the reasonableness is? And then, you know, think of, think of that in exec session. That's what you're talking about. And then, you know, the person in the room says, well, I'm going to go tell the seller what that number is. Is that helpful? No, it's an executive session, so you can have that discussion. Much like you have discussions about litigation in exec session. I have had numerous times, my cases discussed in exec session. And the information leaked, what the city strategy is. So I had it happen, very controversial case involving a former employee. And the council said, hey, we want an update and what, what's WCI looking at? You know, I know there's a mediation coming up. Any idea what their numbers were? And the city attorney said, yeah, I think, I think we're looking at, you know, settling somewhere in this range, but this was all in exec session. When I got to the mediation, I learned the other side had my top dollar. How do I negotiate? I made an offer. They laughed. They said, now, I know where you're, I know your top dollar and we're going to ask for more than your top dollar. I already know. How much you have and that's not going to do it, Anne. That's not going to do it. How did that help? How did that help me? There are also times when you may have a conflict. You may have a conflict. I had one that I was asked to come in and talk about the status of a litigation. To a council and one of the council members was actually part of the plaintiff team and would not recuse themselves. And the city attorney and I just sat there and I'm waiting, what do we do? And so the whole time she said, no, I don't have a conflict. I'm not recusing myself. So I didn't say very much. Didn't say much at all. And I know it was frustrating to others, but I said, I'm sorry. I, I feel having a plaintiff in the room while I'm discussing my strategy is a problem. And I'm not going to do it. So, you know, it, it, just recuse yourself if you have a conflict. There are times when sanctions can be imposed for violating exec session. Give you an example, we had a incident. Where we were called in, we have something that we use in personnel and land use. Where the city can consult with an attorney, it's called pre-defense review. Where we say, you know, if, if, if the city attorney wants to or the city wants some help on a matter. We, we'll give you an attorney to talk to and it's part of our administrative budget. It doesn't count against the city. So it's a very controversial land use matter. And they wanted one of our land use attorneys to come in and kind of explain to the council. Some of the risks of litigation and some of the, the risks that could happen. So he prepared a memo and as you know, when memos are circulated in exec session, they're collected back. Well, somebody didn't hand their memo back. And in fact, went out and handed it to the lawyer of the concerned citizens group. Right in front of all the other council members. And, you know, the city attorney leapt out of her seat and said, privilege has not been waived, executive session. Material and started kind of grabbing it back. And there was this on camera back and forth. And then she quickly said, told each of the council members, did you waive privilege? Did you waive privilege? You know, went along and the answer was no. And so she then said, this council member has violated attorney-client privilege, violated exec session. And they sanctioned that council member for doing so. So again, you know, keep executive. Executive session, keep it to yourself. If we find out our stuff is leaking, if there's a leak, I'm not going to tell the city what's happening. And I have the right to do that. I shouldn't have to do that. But if I know, there's times when we have said, we are cutting off all communication. You have a leak and we know it. And I've seen it on the front page of the newspaper. What we said in exec session are updates that made the paper. We're done. And the last thing I want to do is tell you guys, I'm not telling you anything. It's your litigation. But I'm going to say no, because I think it's going to jeopardize my defense. So again, this is my plea, resist the temptation to share. Sometimes you hear really cool things in exec session. Uh, be mindful of written communication. Again. What you write sometimes can be interpreted different ways. It is always a public record if you're writing on behalf of the city as a city council person. It's a public record and the public has a right to see it. And so it will often be something that can show up in litigation. I've seen it where there's, you know, emails that say, stop this project at any cost, make sure you don't do X, Y, Z. So what, first thing I'm going to tell you is always use your city email. Don't use your personal one. Your city email means the city can retain it. If it's city business, they can retain it, they can store it, they can produce it. Some cities have gotten in trouble on using personal email. And what it does is it subjects your personal email potentially to search. So what happens is you would have to fill out a declaration that says, I've searched on my email, et cetera, et cetera. Now, if a document shows up that you didn't, is opposite of your declaration. That's going to be a problem. Could subject your email to a complete search. So there's different cases out there. I won't go into those. But just know that that can be a hazard for you and always use your city email. And if, if it's something, let's put it this way, use the golden rule. You know, say things, nothing inflammatory, always polite. And make sure, if it can be done in a phone call, use a phone call. Sometimes that's better than writing. Is your social media account? Personal for election activity or just to discuss city business? So David just actually sent me a really good write-up he did that came out of the Supremes with regard to a Facebook page. But again, this is really murky area. Before this Supreme Court decision, there, I had a case where a mayor had a personal email account. I mean, a Facebook account. Started talking about city business. Citizens were contacting him about city issues through that account. It was all open and then a hate group started posting on his page. And he removed the postings and he blocked them. And this hate group said, you opened a public forum. You were a public official, you were having open dialogue on city manners, city matters. You're blocking me as a violation of my First Amendment. And the judge agreed with him on that case. And I had to pay a hate group for a violation of their First Amendment rights. Now, this decision that recently came down, and I think David's more of an expert at it than I am. Allows some discretion for personal use and it's really kind of, are you empowered to speak on behalf of the city? There's some tests that go through. And so, I don't know, David, did you want to kind of?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to kind of share that memo with you or that write-up with you just. For your own information, but as Anne was saying, the. The Supreme Court, I think, tried to provide some helpful guidance in the sense that. Facebook posts or social media posts that aren't, that you don't exercise your actual authority. For the city to speak, if you're just talking about something that's going on in the city, it's probably not an official post. That is going to create a public forum for other people to post on. But the parameters around that are pretty murky and it's, I think it would be a very difficult. In many situations, it'd be difficult to draw a bright line to know for sure whether you're creating a public forum or not. So it's, it's, it's a helpful decision, but it's not also, it's not a completely helpful decision. But I'll, I'll be happy to share that with you.
And I think, you know, the one thing is your campaign, you know, if you have a campaign Facebook, that's clearly okay. And I think, you know, the one thing is your campaign, you know, if you have a campaign Facebook, that's clearly okay. That's separate. It's when you kind of are stepping into that city role. You have a personal First Amendment right to speak, but when you're kind of espousing on behalf of the city, that may create a public forum. And so you just need to be careful there. Um, so this is a new area that, um, they tried, like, they said, they tried to give us guidance, but it really didn't. It gave us some, um, but again, just be mindful of that. Um, one thing I, I forgot to talk about in defamation that I always mention, as I mentioned campaigns. Um, there is actually case law that says during a campaign, you can defame your opponent all you want. And I, I was like, what is wrong with America? That we have a decision that says, no, you can defame your opponent all you want. You can't be sued for defamation. So, uh, that is one area where, uh, when you're campaigning, you can, you can defame your opponent and not be sued. Um, and I think that is it. You guys have any more questions? I'm happy to answer. Yeah. Right. I'm sorry, Mr. Holloway.
I, I go, but you have answered a number of names, uh, but anyway, we'll go there. Um, so, uh, defamation, uh. She kind of, I was reluctant, but you broke the subject. Defamation against council members. Uh, there's pretty no limit, right? And people, as a public figure, people can pretty well say what they want to say about me. Whether I agree with it or not, or whether it has facts bases or not, and I have limited recourse against them.
Usually public officials, and that's why I had that in there, is the person a public official? Um, because usually people can question. And say unkind things about public officials. I'm, you know, I'm in a position where somebody could say a lot of bad things about me. Because I'm an executive director of a public entity. So yes, I, you know, there. I, you know, there are certain things, I, it depends on, I mean, it's always fact specific. Um, but in general, there's a lot of leeway for public officials.
And can I say whatever I want about him?
I, I'd be.
Uh, yeah, be careful because you're, you're no longer public saying things without me. You're a council member saying these.
Council member, so that might, might be a little bit, yeah.
I had a question, um, if that mayor had, uh, deleted the Facebook page rather than blocking the individual group. That would have been fine, right?
That's a really good question, because you opened a public forum. If you deleted the page. Did you shut down a public forum? I think you can, can't you?
So. It, it will, it will depend on what the purpose of your page was. And it will depend on what the purpose of a particular post was. If you shut down a forum after you've already opened it. That could be a problem. Not going to give you a definite opinion, especially not here, but, um. Uh, you know, it's, I think you, you do have to be careful about trying to cut off. Um, public input on a forum that you've already opened, just because you don't like the content of the feedback you're getting. So.
And I, I think the decision, you know, kind of mentioned putting things on there that, you know, this is not a public forum. But it, it, it's not clear enough to say just typing, this is not a public forum is going to get you there, but they were kind of hinting a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I think they tried to set up some pretty clear guidelines for, for public officials. To the extent that they put, you know, disclaimer, I'm only speaking on my own behalf, not exercising any authority of the agency. That's great, as long as you abide by that. But if then in your very next post, you say, official announcement from the city of Snow Call Me. Blah, 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 blah. Then it's going to be like, well, you're just being inconsistent. So that's not going to help in that case.
I, I mean, I have to say, this is kind of new, the new area, the new frontier. So, and I'm, I'm not, I, I think it's still murky. Honestly, I don't have a good answer.
I certainly feel like it's murky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I have a question. So regarding Facebook, if, if a customer posts something on it. And then three other customers chime in on it, is there potential quorum?
Council members? Yes. Potentially depending, I, I mean, again, this area, and I'll, I'll defer to David on that. Um, there's some. There, there's quite a bit of case law out there on, you know, what's serial meeting. So if it's about something you're going to take action on. You know, if you say it's a beautiful day, yes, I agree, it's a beautiful day. It's probably not going to get you there. Um, but I think most city attorneys agree, just don't. Cause you, it, it can look like you're holding a meeting. Um, but there was that San Juan, was it San Juan County case that kind of said it has to be. Um, you know, just showing up together isn't going to get you.
Right, just being in the same room together or being in the same online chat room or in the same string of, of posts, um. Is, is not a meeting, but if it's about a matter of city business, so that the definition of action in the OPMA is very broad. Discussing city business is action, whether you vote on anything or not. So if you're all talking about the same, you know, pavement project in a string. And there's four of you on that string, that's most likely going to be considered a public meeting. Without notice.
Even if you like it. If you, you know, like it instead of comment it, comment on it.
I mean, again, I think, i- i- you know, it, don't give them an argument.
Or put a, you know, sad face or something. I mean, you know.
You know, what I, what I will say is if, if you're doing something and it gives someone an argument, don't do it. I mean, to me, that gives somebody an argument saying you already made with mine. Just like, there was one, a council of one of our members who was meeting. Um, at a coffee house, um, e- every morning after the council meeting. Now, you know, they work for them and they would have, their argument was, we're just having coffee. But it brought up an argument of, no, we think you're talking about last night's city council meeting. We think you're coming up with a plan. We think you're talking about. Uh, and so they had to, you know, they were under fire quite a bit for it. And, you know, the, the easy thing was just don't do it. You know, don't all go to the coffee house at the same time. Um, so I, I think if it's questionable, um, serial meetings are a problem.
Right.
Bad serial good.
Um, yeah, I got a lot of concerns about that issue about streets. I mean, if, if a study comes in and says, yeah, you ain't have a six lane highway through the middle of your town. I'm like, yeah, but that's like going to totally like ruin the whole vibe of the city. We would have a completely different city, like. So the study said, then am I just like bound to that? I have to be quiet. I can't say anything. Cause study said I had to do it.
Well, there's a difference. You have a study. So. Let me put it this way, there is something, and it, it gets granted sometimes called discretionary immunity. Where you decide how to spend your money. So let's say a, a traffic study comes in and says you need, I'll just give you an example. There's a, a small bridge which cars go over. And the traffic study says you need to put a five lane bridge over this river. And it's going to cost you a billion dollars. They didn't have it. So the council has the ability as a body to say, to use their discretion to not. Fund that project. Because you don't have the money to do so. And so you have discretion of which projects to take on and which projects not to take on. So there's, there, when you're saying, somebody's telling me I have to have a fi- five lane highway. Um, you know, based on the, the, the amount of traffic that's going on, et cetera. That you can say, you know, I, under our discretion, we can't afford. Now, you just said things like, I don't want a five lane highway. I don't like how it looks. I don't like the vibe.
Right.
And that could get you into trouble.
Follow up.
Yeah, so, uh. Effectively, we're kind of bound. If a study comes in that says, uh, that this is the recommended thing and we can't afford it. Um, it's kind of hard to look at the budget and say that we couldn't, uh, reasonably someone could look at our budget and say, yeah, you, you could afford that. Really, as soon as a study comes in and, and staff tells us, yeah, this is what it says, um, that's it. There, there's really no discussion to be had. Because otherwise, we're saying that we have some sort of expertise or, or we prefer to have. Uh, what someone could consider to be a more, uh, dangerous setup for whatever arbitrary reason. That's really scary. I mean, there are a lot of different types of traffic things that, um. That, uh, different studies could come to different conclusions. Like, can we go to a different study? Can we, can we as a council say, I just don't know if, if that seems right? Can we order a new study to, to confirm what the other one said? Just wondering about those things.
Your city attorney, Lynn Han, had a comment?
Thank you. Um, first off, kind of keep in mind, there's a distinction between roads for studies for capacity versus studies for safety. So if you're talking about needing to accommodate more traffic because you need it because you're growing. Or because you have more residents and you're just trying to facilitate the flow of cars in an efficient way. That those capacity adding projects, those are really questions that are, aren't so much about liability. Except in the context of growth management. And you can't use, you can't use, um. Sort of a refusal to provide necessary services, necessary transportation facilities as a way to stop growth. Um, but those are capacity things. I think, I think that the cases that, that, uh, that Anne was talking about and that. That she's particularly focused on are safety issues where you don't want, um. Counsel playing traffic engineer on how you design an intersection or what kind of traffic calming devices are appropriate on a particular street. Not so much at, on the question of. How much traffic, you know, how do we want traffic to flow through the city? Do we want, uh, an elevated, uh, four lane road or would we rather have, you know? I, I think those types of aesthetic things are still very much up for debate and up for discretion. And how, how much can you afford that kind of thing?
Mayor Tim Holloway.
So I, I guess the. More likely question that we have struggled with, I'll take this intersection out here. We go through the traffic study and we say, doesn't need a stop sign. Neighborhood gets together and says, we're going to, we want a stop sign. They go get their own traffic engineer. And engineering's not as solid, hard numbers as people would like to believe. And he comes back with shock of all things. Oh, yeah. Some of the warrants you questioned are wrong. So you do need a traffic. You do need to stop light there. Um. What is this? I'll leave it open at that. What does the city do at that state? Do you take the worst case or do you stick by your engineer?
Right. I think your engineer needs to review the other engineer. And come up with a decision as to what engineering treatments or what warrants. Or, you know, basically, I hate to say it, but defend their position and review it and say. Um, you know, they disagree a lot. You're right. I mean, they, they do.
Yeah.
And so I think it's fair to say to your traffic engineer, can you review this? Um, can you take a, a second look at this? And, you know, then there's an engineering decision and engineering answer. But once they come back, I wouldn't say, but the citizens group guy, you know, he said, because I, I mean, again, it's. You have to defend your position. And so if your city engineer looks at it and says, hmm, this isn't correct, this isn't correct, this, or maybe they'll look at it and say, yeah, okay, yeah. I missed this or I missed that, or we could go back and do another traffic study. There's more traffic out there. So I think it, it warrants a review.
One more.
City's journey, Lynn Han.
So also bear in mind that your traffic engineers, uh, are going to be required to have professional liability insurance. They have errors and omissions coverage for the work that they do. And so as long as the city is, has reasonably relied on the opinion of a professional engineer. A court may decide that that was an unreasonable design. You may ultimately decide that your engineer was wrong, but you may very well have recourse against the engineer that you relied on. So.
And we, um, we've actually had that.
Yeah.
Um, where the city has used an outside engineering firm. And, um, their recommendation didn't hold true in court and they were brought in as a defendant. It happens. Uh, this is, like I said, this, this area of law is pretty active right now. Um, so again, do, um, do you guys have in-house city traffic engineers or you guys country?
Yes.
You have one.
So, I mean, it, it just, it's going to depend on the work that's being done and the, you know, what's coming at you. And who's giving you the advice.
Council, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, one other one is, um, if I suspected that there was an area that could be, uh, dangerous. Uh, for whatever reason, um, and I brought that forward, uh. I guess if I, if I did it verbally to staff, then it's no big deal. But if I sent them an email and whether I was right or wrong and someone gets into an accident, then all of a sudden we could have a problem.
Here's the, here's my, my caution. This is a dan- like if you said, I think this is dangerous, that's going to be used against you. If you say, I've, you know, I, I'm curious if you've looked at this intersection, could you do, could you review it? That's not going to get you in trouble. You're just curious. Could you review this intersection? You didn't use an inflammatory word. You're not saying, I watched somebody, and I've had this. I watched somebody almost get killed the other day. I need you to do something about that intersection. That's going to be used. But if you say, you know, I mean, I, I personally think, you know, communication. Um, verbally is better, but if you say something like, could you please, um, take a look at this intersection? Um, that's, that's fine. That's not going to get you in trouble. But inflammatory words will.
Any other questions? Our city administrator?
Sent you here, could you touch on text messages, too?
Uh, text messages are public records. Um, you have transitory, like you go somewhere, hey, I'm downstairs. Um, those aren't really going to be considered public record, but they are public record. Um, there, the Pierce County, um, prosecuting a district attorney got into a lot of trouble with text messages. Where he was saying, I was texting on my personal phone. Um, but it was things about somebody else and people kept them and they, there was this huge fight. And basically I said, you, you were talking about city or at this point county business on your personal phone, your personal texts, they are public document. You need to produce them. And so if you, you know, are really bored and you want to read a whole series of cases against Pierce County. On whether your public, uh, phone is, uh, or your private phone becomes public, uh, that's exactly what happened there. So yes, just know you're texting about city business is a public record, just like email. Um, so make sure that can be retained. That's a big one. Um, we actually have a policy at WCIA, um, that we don't have, we don't allow texting. Because I, I mean, I'd have to capture it, save it. Um, and that's what most cities do is capture and save all the texts. So I just say, no texting on city or my issued forms on WC.
Right. Anything else? Counselor Benson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still stuck on what Councilman Johnson was talking about. I, and, and the general sense that I, that I come out of is. If we have a genuine concern about something. There's not a way to, to speak about it in a public forum. And you, I mean, there are things that, that could potentially, everybody could recognize as a concern. Uh, but to not be able to discuss that and find solutions feels like. I, I. It feels like an abandonment of our responsibility.
Is your, I, I mean, there are times when you have concerns about code, about regulation. But if you're saying, you know, I have concerns about a certain safety hazard. About, um, a certain, I, I'm really focused on like basically roads. And road design. And, you know, when you're talking about safety issues, um, I think that's a conversation for staff. Um, and so when you, I, I guess I'm not following. You know, there are times when you are going to be debating your concerns. I'm not, I'm not saying, don't do that. And don't bring up matters of concern. I'm just saying kind of what your city attorney recommended. If it, if it has to do with safety of the public and you have concerns, that's probably not voiced in open session. Because it, it is going to be used against you. That clarify?
Um. It, 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 it does. It's, it's not satisfying, but it does clarify. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, sorry.
It's the world I live in. And, and I'll, I'll give you an example, you know, I, I, there were, in our neighborhood, a family was saying, we need a playground, we need a play structure. And my husband turned and said, she'll give you 20 reasons why you don't want to do that. And I am, I'm that person that will say, but you have to have ball protection after this, you have to do that. I mean, I am. Sorry, but that's my world and this is a world that's getting multi-millions of dollars right now. So, you know, I get it. I do.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Anne. Really appreciate you coming in and doing the do's and don'ts, don'ts, do's and don'ts of training. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
Moved by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Counselor Watten. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? And we are adjourned and we will reconvene at seven PM. So good evening. So good evening. Um, the council, we just completed a round table and now we are convening at seven PM. Let the record show that all council is present. Counsel, would you please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? And Councilman Watt Cotton, would you please lead the allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we now move to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved second.
Been moved by Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Counselor Johnson. Is there any discussion? Hey, CNN, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously and the agenda is approved. So our next item is a, we have a special guest here tonight. His name is Declan Melody. And he's a fifth grader at Snoqualmie Elementary School. He won the Snoqualmie Elementary Spelling Bee, which qualified him for the Regional Spelling Bee of King County and Snohomish Counties. And after winning the regional bee, he qualified for the National Spelling Bee in Maryland, where he tied first twenty second place. The national competition consisted of two hundred and forty-five spellers from across the country, and many of them were seventh and eighth graders. And Declan is a fifth grader from Snoqualmie Elementary School. So. Hey Declan, thanks for joining us tonight. So what were some of the words you spelled during the spelling bee?
Contretrieche.
Wow, okay. How about me having a couple other ones?
I couldn't even see it.
Macadam. Oyster.
You spell any real words?
So many spell them. So I was watching the news and I saw several of the spelling bee contestants and they spell it really fast. Is that, was that like the are there certain types of rounds that you have to go through and spell a bunch of words within a certain amount of time? Is that how it works? Or how does that work?
If the spelling bee has gone on for too long without anyone who being the winner, they do that to decide the winner. Whoever spells more words correctly in that round who is the winner.
Thank you. And so how do you prepare for spelling?
I prepare for spelling by studying words.
Thank you. So. Certificate of recognition. Declan in recognition of excellent academic achievement and placing twenty second in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Congratulations.
Hey Declan, you got a favorite word? What's your favorite word? Well, it's good. Let us know when you find it. I would like to know.
Right, thank you. Next to our presentation on Metro Community Van program, and we have Teresa Nego with Hope Link who's going to present tonight. I think you can over there, use the microphone, be great. One second. It's coming.
Mayor? Just for Declan and his family. This may not be as exciting as a spelling bee, so if you don't want to stay for the rest of this, you're entitled to leave.
I, I did tell them that earlier.
You're being very gracious and sitting there.
I mean, we haven't seen the presentation, but it's good.
Okay, hello everyone. Um, hoping this is working. Uh, my name is Teresa Nego. I work for Hope Link. And I run the community van, um, in Snoqualmie Valley. Uh, we are a partnership between King County Metro and Hope Link. Um, I currently run the vans in Shoreline, Lake Doris Park, Redmond and Snoqualmie Valley. We have vans in Duval and Carnation, and we will be expanding into Snoqualmie, which is why I'm here today. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So a quick overview of community van, the goal of the program is to fill in mobility gaps uh, throughout the county. Um, so that includes transportation out of the city and on the weekends and the evenings. Our vans are available twenty-four, seven, and we have them parked, um, throughout Snoqualmie Valley where we're working on it. Um, it is a low-cost reservation-based and volunteer-based transportation program. So we are volunteer-run. We don't have paid drivers. It's a really wonderful, uh, program. Um, we serve the community however they need, so we approve a variety of different trips for any trip reason. As long as the trip fulfills a two rider minimum, then the program has the flexibility to go almost anywhere, which I will also get into. Um, there is no income, age, or ability restrictions, so absolutely anyone can ride the community van. And there is no application process to be a rider. Go to the next slide. Okay, so there's three different ways to use community van. I have three different flyers if you're interested after my presentation as well. Um, so the first way is to request a ride and become a rider with community van. The second way is to volunteer with us and volunteer to drive the said rider. And the third way is kind of a merge between the first two, uh, which is to borrow the van. Um, and anyone over the age of twenty-one with five years driving history and a current and unrestricted Washington State driver's license can, uh, become a driver. Next slide. Okay, so a few basics for community van. Um, so you.
One second. Counselor Curtisson?
Hey, I just had a quick question. So if someone, for example, a, a parent wanted to go on a trip with their child, how would it work with a car seat and things like that? Are they going to be subject to just normal driving laws? Is it going to be more akin to riding on a bus? How is that handled?
Yeah, so I would say more, um, normal driving laws in a car. So, um, we unfortunately aren't able to provide car seats just because car seats are individual to each child. But if a parent would like to drive their kid, um, they can bring in the car seat and stall it themselves and then just take it out after.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Cause there had been a, a question from a resident about that. So thank you.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, um, so the first basic with community van is that you can borrow or ride in the van for two dollars and seventy-five cents or less per rider. Um, it is set at that fare because we match King County Metro bus fare. So however much you would pay on a bus is however much you would pay in the community van. Um, so two dollars and seventy-five cents for an adult, a dollar for seniors, free for anyone eighteen and under. And then we also, um, include, uh, reduced and subsidized fare. Um, the second part is, uh, what I find really exciting, which is that, uh, the community van completely pays for gas, insurance, tools, and maintenance. So if you do happen to ride in the van or borrow the van, we cover the gas. So, um, it's at that two dollars and seventy-five cents and it does not go up beyond that. Um, trips can be taken up to two hours driving distance away from the pickup location. So once we park a van here, which we are working on, parking one in, at, um, Snoqualmie YMCA, it can drive up to two hours away. That does not mean that you can only drive for two hours, but you can drive about a two hour radius away. If there happens to be traffic, we don't make you turn around. Um, but if it, uh, is on average about two hours away, then the trip is approved. Um, so I like to promote activities like going to Leavenworth or the Tulip Festival or snowboarding or something like that. So a lot of different ways that you can use the van. We again have a two rider minimum since we are a, uh, rideshare service. Um, it needs to be a driver and two people. Um, and we also have a variety of different vans. So we have six passenger vans that are wheelchair accessible. They have a ramp and then we can, um, secure a wheelchair into the van. We also have twelve passenger vans that are not wheelchair accessible, but if you have a large family or a large group, um, the twelve passenger vans are really great for that. The vans are available anytime, um, day or night, twenty-four, seven, as long as it's not overnight. Um, and if you are requesting a ride, it will depend on whether or not a volunteer is available. Uh, next slide. Okay, um, so I wanted to highlight all the different ways that the van can be used because sometimes it can be a little difficult trying to figure out uh, van uses. Um, so a lot of people think that they'll be for things like just medical trips, so, social services trips. Um, or people who, uh, need an accessible ride, but it can be used for anything. So it can be used by organizations for food delivery trips, um, grocery trips, uh, faith-based services, donation, uh, drop-offs and pickups. Um, and these are all ways that we have used the van in the past, so we're not completely making it up. Uh, we have a variety of different, um, uh, ways that it can be used. Um, so it can be used by community members. Um, in Duval, the other day, we actually had, uh, a large group of fourteen, um, guys who went on a bachelor party, uh, with the van. So you can really use it for anything. Um, uh, another great idea is using the van for, uh, carpooling to games, community outings, going to a Mariners game. Uh, you can also use it for your family and friends. So if you have a bunch of family members visiting and you only have a small car, you can go pick them up if, um, in one of our twelve passenger vans or six passenger vans, you can bring them on day excursions. You can also just request a ride with our, uh, volunteers. So that can be for medical trips, uh, social service trips and even airport pickups and drop-offs. That one is a very popular one. Especially trying to get to SeaTac from somewhere in the valley. It can be really expensive. Um, and so if you use community van instead and you meet that two rider minimum, it can be two dollars and seventy-five cents or less per person. So you would save a lot of money.
Wow.
Um, and the last way, of course, is to volunteer to drive. So volunteer to drive people to the airport or any mix of things. Um, and this can also be for one-time trips or recurring trips. So if you have, uh, a trip that you'd like to go on every single week or borrow the van every single week for, um, let's say after school sports games, um, then you can do that as well and you would just reserve it with us.
So we do have a question. Counselor Benson?
So if you're, say you are going to a game, uh, in Seattle, can you organize the return trip as well?
Yes.
Uh, and I said, do you, didn't do you, do you need to get the driver a ticket to the game or anything like that? And, or?
Um, so you would just give us the details of whatever your, uh, trip is. We've had some people go to Mariners games or even to concerts. And any driver that picks up that said trip will commit to bringing you there and back. Um, if we're not able to find a driver, we can of course talk to you about trying to figure out, like maybe finding you a one day way driver there and then a one-way driver back. Um, but you don't need to purchase anything for the driver.
And if you can volunteer, can you say, hey, I can, I'm available on Fridays from ten to two or something like that?
Yeah, there's a lot of flexibility as a volunteer driver. Um, there is no commitment requirement to X number of rides per month or per week. Uh, we will actually reach out to you once we find a trip, um, that we think will match your, um, match your schedule and then you can choose whether or not to take that trip. Okay, next slide. Oh, and then that's it.
Well, you were undersold with the whole spelling bee comment. This was very exciting.
Thank you. I had to keep it short in case there are any other questions from anyone.
So when will one be parked then at, at the Snoqualmie Y?
Yeah, we're actually working on it right now. So we've already gotten approval from the Y. Um, we are just working on getting like the lockbox, um, set up with the keys and the parking spot and everything. So hopefully it'll come very, very soon. Um, hopefully within the next few weeks or so, uh, we have the van all ready. We just need to get somebody out there to put the, the signage and the lockbox up.
Excellent. And we did try it out this last weekend. It, it, you had a, you had a driver come with the van and took us on our CIP tour, program tour, so.
I didn't know that was a Hope Link van.
Counselor Johnson?
Had to miss out on that because I was driving my kid around. Uh, speaking of, uh, what is the, uh, vetting process for the volunteers? So just like some person's like, hey, I'll do it. And they're like a super scary driver and.
Yeah, so we do have, um, a vetting process through King County Metro. I will preface by saying, um, uh, that there, I don't believe that there's a criminal background check, but there is a driving history check. Um, so, uh, the driver would put in a, a, an application, then it would be vetted by King County Metro. Um, and if they're approved, then they can move on to the volunteer training process.
But there is a training process.
Yes, there is a training process. Um, it takes about thirty to forty-five minutes. It's in-person here in Snoqualmie. We would teach the volunteer how to secure a, uh, wheelchair into the van in case they ever happen to need it. And then the ins and outs of using the vans and all the different features. Um, and then there is about a forty-five minute online orientation and then that's it. And then they're approved to drive.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. It was very, that's a great presentation. Looking forward to using it.
Where would you like me to put flyers if anybody's interested in grabbing some?
I know I would like one.
Maybe come over here and give it to our city clerk and we'll hand them out.
He's not going to give me one.
Right. With that, we will, um, go on to public comment. While no online public comments will be accepted during the meeting, um, written comments are encouraged. Maybe submitted in person, mail or email to ourcityclerk@snocomewat.gov. Um, first few ground rules for those attending the meeting in person. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient, orderly manner. So comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city of residence for the record. Um, direct the comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of council, mayor, or staff or to engage in debate. The council will quickly, quietly and respectfully listen to your concern. And public comments during this portion of the meeting should be limited to topics of concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in comments being suspended. Unless, please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all respect would be afforded to you. So with that, is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda tonight? So please raise your hand. Right. I'm not seeing any. So, um, public comment is now closed. We've gone to consent agenda. The consent agenda contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of the claims report dated June tenth, twenty twenty-four, AB twenty-four dash zero five nine. Approval of fireworks stand permit for impact ministries. AB twenty-four dash zero seven zero, resolution sixteen eighty-eight, awarding the public works contract to Puget Paving and construction for road maintenance and repair project. AB twenty-four dash zero six zero, demolition and removal of the residence at seventy-seven oh two Railroad Avenue Southeast. May have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Watten and second by Counselor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Counselors, is there any discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Just wondering on the timing on, uh, AB twenty-four dash zero six zero.
And the demolition and removal. We'll have our Dylan Gamp, project manager?
Um, we will sign the contract as soon as I get to it tomorrow morning.
Um we will sign the contract as soon as I get to it tomorrow morning. Basically, we'll start the progressing through the contracting there. And then we are hoping to have it demoed within about a month or two. Some cleanup might take a touch longer depending on uh some of the trucking and reliability of procuring those, but it should happen pretty quick.
Any other, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? And each cons- consent agenda passes unanimously. Moving on to public safety. Is there a public safety committee report?
There is no report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Community development committees, your community development report?
No community development report at this time, Adamir.
Thank you. Then our first item for Parks and Public Works is AB twenty four dash zero six nine, resolution sixteen eighty nine, awarding public works contract to Masana construction for Kimball Creek Bridges Restoration Project. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Yeah, this uh agenda bill seeks to uh seeks approval to award a public works contract to Masana Construction Incorporated for the Kimball Creek Bridges Resta- Restoration Project and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. And uh the motion is to adopt resolution sixteen eighty nine, awarding public works contract to Masana Construction Incorporated for the construction of the Kimball Creek's Bridges Restoration Project and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Benson and second by Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Seeing none. We have, tonight we have him amid our project engineer to answer any questions. Counselor, do you have any questions regarding this item? Did you want to hear an overview or? Councilor Benson?
One of the things we talked about at Public Works was that the um the engineer's estimate was uh several hundred thousand dollars lower than what we actually ended up contracting for. Do you want to speak to that and what was involved in that?
Yes, sure. So uh for this project, the engineering estimate was uh less than the contract we got. We got only one bidder for the project, but giving the scale of the scale of the project and also the timeline. So for this project, it's a bridge repair project and the kind of uh contractors who do the this job, either big contractors who do big bridges or small contractors uh who do just like deck repairs. So for this project, it's very involved for small contractor and uh less than what big contractors they usually do. So for the scale of the project that affected the number of bids and the contractors they bid for it. And also we have in water work. Wh- with in water work, you have a permit. You can only work uh July to October. So if we didn't work July to October this year, we work July to October next year. So for the contractor, this is the season and this is uh where they do their, they their project usually. So we're competing on a season for a project that's uh less attractive to big contractors. And also the other thing about the project, um the the two bridges are structurally deficient and we're losing material behind the back walls of the bridge. So it's kinda now uh like failing on uh like uh filling wise and also structurally failing.
Councilor Benson?
I think it's important to note that uh the material is washing out, but they are replacing it. It's not um just a a cavity there. They're they're continually replacing this, but it does need to get done. Uh and just to make sure everybody understands, we're talking about the two little bridges on uh Meadowbrook, not the big bridge on Meadowbrook. I I'm sure everybody caught that, but I I it's that strange um middle sized job where there's not really a huge number of bidders.
Yeah. Any questions? Any other questions? Hey. Move to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? It's unanimous and the awarding a public works contract for the Kimball Creek Bridges Restoration Project is approved. Next is AB twenty four dash zero six six, amendment number two to the consultant services agreement with OTAC for the design of Kimball Creek Bridges Restoration Project. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
This agenda bill seeks to amend the existing services agreement with OTAC Incorporated for the Kimball Creek Bridges Restoration Project to include engineering services and support during construction. OTAC's original scope included construction phase services. And this amendment is to add additional scope to the construction phase services. And move to approve amendment number two to the consultant services agreement with OTAC and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Benson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this item? For the consultant services? Seeing none. Counselor, do you have any comments or questions?
So between it's probably a true question. Uh between this and the contract prior, uh this particular project will go over its current budget. Life's life cycle budget?
Well, so I'm gonna call up Dylan basically. I think he knows the answer to that more than I do on this front, but indeed, this is certainly a project that will impact the CIP. So I wanted everyone to keep in mind here. In essence, we have to make sure that this is incorporated fully within the CIP and so it will impact our balance. And definitely for the most part, and so consequently, we will have to bring bringing an update to council, I believe, the next council meeting if this is approved as well as the initial agenda bill that came forward tonight. So that said, Dylan, do you want? There's other questions? Uh sorry, would you repeat that one so I make sure I get it right?
Well, a question is really two things. I understand the first part that uh for the biennial, it's gonna be two hundred ninety four thousand dollars over its projected cost. Okay, uh and but that'll be handled within the biennial by other projects and shifting money around. So we don't have to do a change of appropriation. Okay, but also want to highlight that overall for the life cycle of this project, we're expecting it to be seventy seventy seven thousand three hundred and some rounded at four, seventy seven point four thousand dollars over budget from what it from budget predicted. Okay, and and that's if anybody asks why this one is off the consent and the other one was on consent. From my standpoint, that's why. Okay, um beware as we get it, we're gonna get into CIP conversation later. These projects will come in under and we've gotta have room to work that. Yeah, that was all my question of ones.
You want me, um I I would you like me to refine? I feel like um.
No, I just want awareness.
Okay.
Okay, in part, I mean in and of itself, seventy seven point four is not enough to to panic. And I think we got an issue that for these bridges, we need to do so s- that that overrun of life cycle overrun is not enough for me to say, no, let's not, you know, as our prior discussion, um let's not fund this. It's needed. This is not enough for me to go down that path. I just want awareness that uh we're gonna have to address that shortfall sometime or another.
Yes, and and I promise you, we will have that conversation probably this evening. I I prepared some materials for you if it's needed.
Councilor Benson?
Can you, could you just explain just briefly why we need to get OTAC involved in this? Uh just so that everybody understands OTAC's role?
Sure. So when we start the construction, we will need uh specialized inspection for all the structural work uh the contractor are gonna do. So OTAC will do construction management for this project. Uh we'll have them by time doing specialized inspection, generalized inspection, and we will try also to use city resources to fill up the other half of the time on the construction management. So basically, we're using OTAC to assure that we're gonna get a good quality product from the contractor.
And uh one of the things uh that we talked about at Parks and Public Works is that there is a patch uh option. But that would cause more problems than it would fix if we did the steel plating until we.
The steel plating is just if we decided to wait and not move forward with that. We can, so so for now, uh our street crew used to fill up the gap every two or three weeks. So if we decided not to move forward with the construction for any reason and we have to wait for the season of twenty twenty five, which is up to July of twenty twenty five, we have to blade the the both bridges to maintain the the feelings we have right now because the material is washing out behind the bridges.
Thank you.
And I believe we did get some impact mitigation funds for these bridges from from the casino. Is there, is the there's a lot of traffic as a result of it, so. Any other questions? Right. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? And the motion passes and the consultant service agreement with OTAC is approved. Third i- item is AB twenty four dash zero seven two, resolution sixteen ninety one, adopting the six year transportation improvement program for the period twenty twenty five through twenty thirty. And tonight, this is for discussion only. We we will be brought back June eighteenth um to Parks and Public Works Committee meeting as well as June twenty fourth for city council meeting for a public hearing and proposed adoption. So we have this Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction?
This agenda bill presents the city's six year transportation improvement plan for the period twenty twenty five through twenty thirty. The six year plan is updated annually. Following public hearing and council approval, the tip will be submitted to Wash Dot on June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. That'll be a trick. Proposal, I proposed action is one to conduct, conduct the public hearing um and to move to adopt the resolution. Uh adopting the six year transportation improvement program for the period of twenty twenty five through twenty thirty.
We have Dylan Gamble, who will present this item.
Uh just note, uh
That'll be the next one.
Hearing right now, yeah.
That'll be the next one on June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Did I, is that really what it says, okay?
This was set up in the in the summer.
I'll correct that if we make one. Uh yes, it will be the twenty fourth or eighth, like fourth?
Fourth.
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth of twenty twenty four. Um and yes, that is the second meeting. So following this one, we have two meetings, one to discuss this. Go over any of the details and I'll get into that in a second. And then we'll follow that up with the public hearing and uh pretty necessary adoption so that we can meet the state requirements to have this on our website and sent to Wash Dot for compliance. Uh there's not a lot to be done on the Wash Dot side, but they do require us to submit this document. And if we have projects that eventually move on to the state's tip uh or stip as they call it, uh then they will kind of pull from this document, add it to theirs. That usually requires funding from either PSRC, federal highways, something of that nature. So this is our tip and this is our transportation improvement uh plan or program. And it is a list of capital projects specifically in transportation terms. Um the list is broken down into three color coded sections. Uh projects that the city has funding for is working on in the next section of time, in our next six years, I should say. Anyway, projects that are identified and still need funding of some sort. And then there's projects that are beyond the scope of this six year cycle and or are requiring other agencies to either make them begin or start, or they're completely on another agency's uh say turf, but it it's their project and we have a a need or want or a desire to see it completed or started, initiated. And so what this document shows is all those projects listed in a priority and with funding, start time um and a kind of combination of local funding and other sources of funding if they are available. Uh the requirements for the state are simply to have the list. And I don't want to s- uh I'll steer clear of any sort of other things than that, but to say that the priority is a council uh councilmatic choice. Uh one to help be uh give guidance to staff so that we understand what the uh objectives and goals from council's perspective are for this list of projects as well as to indicate to other jurisdictions or any other political parties that the council or staff may be having communications with to guide that relationship. So uh that is the list of projects. Uh the changes, since we do this every year, the changes are not substantial from the last year's adopted tip. Uh some changes that you'll probably notice are there is no Parkway uh rehabilitation because that project was completed. And so I removed it and uh likewise removed it from the priority ranking. Uh and we have added some projects or for clarity, kind of changed the names on them a bit or located them differently. For example, Complete Streets previously did not have funding, but in the current draft CIP, it does have funding. So I placed it in the green. We can always address this another time. It's not in jeopardy of state funding or that, but it's a way to demonstrate it. Uh the last one to note is at the very bottom, uh railroad crossings improvements. This is a uh I'm sort of parallel tracked. Uh sorry about the pun. I have to do it. It's a train reference. So we are doing two projects. Uh railroad crossings improvements, safety improvements at King and at the Parkway. Uh those projects are currently underway. We work with the Northwest Railway Museum to do them. And we're really a pastor entity and kind of manage a lot of the granting stuff, but all the funding is really coming from the state. And so what we're doing is essentially in increasing the timeline of this by adding a couple other projects in the future that if we receive funding, they're demonstrated in our tip. We could go after the state funding and we wouldn't be in jeopardy of not complying with our own planning documents. So that's the major changes from the previous uh tip uh for you as well as uh an updated map that kind of uh refines some some details.
Councilor Washington?
Yes, thank you. I'm just curious, are these listed in order of priority?
No, they are not.
They're a priority rating?
They're there is not a priority rating on yours. I printed the wrong one, unfortunately. There is a uh to give you a quick rundown, they're mostly in order. There are a couple oddities where they bump out of whack. However, this is mostly it. I believe that the one that's on the digital is correct. This one is not.
But there is a priority rating.
There is a priority. Yes.
We just don't have it tonight.
Uh we spoke about the public works committee. It is the same as I demonstrated at the public works committee with a couple small changes. One, bringing complete streets from number seventeen to number four, which is why it's higher up in the list. You can see the priorities on the third box over.
Okay.
That's generally how it's structured, right?
Perfect.
Yep.
Perfect, good.
So that order obviously is not going to perfectly match this because there is no box called priority. Uh apologies for that. I can get the next one printed. It will be corrected by the next meeting. Um and I will have it done rather quickly, actually. I think it's just a hidden uh tab on the Excel document.
Okay.
But I can address any other.
Councilor Benson?
And one of, one of the points that you made was that the priority is not a state requirement. The pri- prioritizing the the projects is not a state requirement. That's something that we do to make it more, make more sense for us.
It's it's not called out in the law that requires this.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things here. Um first was with the King Street Rail Crossing Improvements. Uh would there be anything uh in that project slash program, project that uh would uh that would interfere with the hypothetical closing of that section of King Street?
Y- yes, to a set in extent, um but we've been pretty cognizant of that as we've had the discussions. Um one thing that we've been considering is how we have given our application to the state when we received the funding. So do we call out specifically that we were gonna close this right away? And they also gave us recommendations to consider, which included closing the street to permanent traffic. So we're within kind of that negotiation period right now. And before we cross any lines, uh that will be brought to council, so you're aware of. If we're on the edge of uh kind of crossing that that line, but at this time and especially with any sort of temporary closures, we're almost certainly not in any sort of jeopardy. It would be only a complete closure. It would make certain things not. It would be only a complete closure, it would make certain things not make sense, but we're not going down that path as far as I'm aware at this.
Councilwoman Washington?
I think. You're, okay, just a follow up question here, so looks like project number nine, three, eleven, Newton Street, King Street, Soqami Parkway, on the master sheet there have been moved down to unfunded. Is that accurate?
Yes, okay. So they were previously on the unfunded and they've been brought into. Are you looking at your computer or are you looking at my?
Right, so, well, the printed sheet they show is funded.
Yep.
Up there they show us unfunded.
Yes.
Which one's accurate?
I can explain the Newton Street one, which is that we kind of have pivoted it from being a complete grant required program to something we're looking at within our payment improvement, so our street resurfacing.
Okay.
So it's number one, so it's getting a little iffy whether it should be called out as in a completely separate project rather than just included in the program. However, I feel like it's uh, good to demonstrate projects that have a history with the city, and so I left it on there, even though it's in the funded section, I also tried to be clear that the dollars did not uh, follow with it, so that's what the paper says. And I'm realizing there's quite a bit of inconsistencies between my documents, between, well, I can barely read this one, but um, between, between this one here and this one, and not in the sense that uh, we have broken any sort of state requirements or rules, but that I've got some color coding issues going on and I could see that from here.
So it, it, Newton Street is funded, that's correct.
Is intended to be part of our program.
Okay.
For resurfacing.
Okay.
Rather than a standalone project. It would be captured under that, so I demonstrated that by following.
And. Understood, is it the same, is that the same for King Street Rail and Soqami Parkway Rail?
They got funding between the years.
Okay, okay. Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Councilor Christensen?
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Washington, you did ask some of the questions that I have about which had been moved up and why. But could Dylan, would you mind talking a little bit more about the outside funding that we've gotten for example, I'm seeing twenty million dollars listed for the Meadow Brook Bridge repair replacement. I'm assuming these are not.
Not get, not in hand money, but we do have in kind, we do have in hand money. So I put it in certain sections to demonstrate that we have funding allocated, not completely unfunded and not, not completely, I'm sorry, not completely covering the entire bill that will be owed one day if we replace the bridge. But we do have funding to do repair or replacement work. So I put it in the funding category, it's this, uh, I'm leaving it kind of in this status because we are doing almost like two projects right now. As the CIP that you've been reviewing has a repair and maintenance project. But if we were to find uh, funding to do a entire bridge replacement, we would probably consider that as a higher priorities than just a repair, a smaller repair effort to a pretty uh, aged bridge. So I left both in this sense here. And once we do the repair project, I'll probably just bring it down to the completely unfunded because we do not have any entire bridge replacement dollars, just the repair. And so in the description, I tried to outline that it's a, it's either or, if funding comes in, then.
Okay.
It's the same description as I would use in the past year.
My, my concern would just be that, that we're making sure that the document is clear so that if we have residents looking or just myself, I was very surprised to see what looked like we may have twenty million dollars in, so if, if we could just make sure that that's just very clear, um, I think that would be helpful.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So guys, when you bring me material on council, either omitting or changing information we agreed to in committee, uh, you can consider me appropriately freaked out. I, I, I understand what you did, but I don't like this. Okay? The priority is kind of a communication with the council and staff administration of what we'd like to do, it's kind of an important thing, we had discussion in there. It ought to be in the material you show. If you're showing material other than what is in the agenda, either there needs to be motion to substitute or this needs to be taken away to stop distracting us, because it is contrary to agenda. I'm further concerned of how um, I now have, and maybe I missed the conversation because I was still fussing inside. Um, I have a project which is now listed as funding, as funded, but all the funding columns to the right are TBD. So how do I have a funded project TBD? Unless that's Transportation Benefit District, uh, but usually there are dollar numbers in here. Yeah. So I, that may be discussion for next committee, but again, I it, it, and I'm, I, I don't like to see material that we did not agree upon the changes in committee before it's brought to council. There were some changes in prioritization we did agree upon, uh, but um, to change the material before it not, not good hygiene, guys.
Councilor Cotton?
Uh, yeah, um, project manager, uh, uh, Gamble did touch on the, the TPD part and that was to indicate that that, that part of the uh, Newton Street connection, if that's what you're referring to, is going to be come under the um, the ongoing street resurfacing program funds. Am I correct in uh, stating that?
But I need to understand why, why it was unfunded prior, did we find new money in the street servicing project now these pop up, or was it not ready when we reviewed it in committee, those are my two options at this stage. Um, but let's have that discussion in committee.
Council Johnson?
I don't want to pile it on, but it also says uh, fed netted onto the green title.
I think uh, Councilman Cut Watten shouldn't have came up with that one.
Oh, yeah. Um. Uh, more importantly, under I have number twenty, it says uh, roundabout, I, I thought that we're supposed to call them traffic circles, but I could be wrong.
I don't think so.
Uh, there's some sort of. They're different things, okay. Thank you, and then the only other question I had then was uh, for the SR eighteen uh, widening uh, Esqahobart Road and uh, Deep Creek, um, is that the, the length that was left that's not four lanes? Or was there anything else beyond that that wasn't four lanes yet? Well, make sure that we cover the whole distance in, in what we wanted in the six year traffic improvement.
Right, we're going, yeah, we're going to Deep Creek now.
Good.
And then Deep Creek to Esqahobart Road is, is the remaining section.
Okay, but there's nothing beyond Esqahobart Road, though.
No, the rest of it.
Or, or.
Four lanes.
Everything ends there.
That's where the sidewalk.
End of the world.
Found it.
All right, thanks.
Any other comments? I think we need to go back and reconcile this and review it again at Parks and Public Works.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you. Thanks for giving them.
Hey, next item is the financial management policy, AB twenty four dash zero seven four, resolution sixteen ninety, updating the financial management policies. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
The financial management policy provides the financial guidance necessary to support and sustain citywide levels of service, achieve fiscal stability, reduce financial risk, and establish an effective, establish an effective system of internal controls and ensure financial transparency. The purpose of the agenda bill is to amend the financial management policy, provide direction needed to support financial sound administration, legislative decision making, and provide the cleanup and clarity needed to support development of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennial budgets. Ta-da, uh, motion to approve resolution sixteen ninety, amending the financial management policy.
Second. Good move by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen. My time for the management financial policies. And is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none?
Think we need.
We have Finance Director Jubuté, would you please present this item?
All right, thank you, um, Jana, I would love to share my screen. Thank you. All right, so good evening, council, I'm here today to present just really a brief overview of the updates to the financial management policy. So far, there's been three touch points, and those three touch points have all taken place within the F and A committee. Uh, the goal really of this update to the financial management policy is to clean up and or clarify uh, the policy to ensure that it's really kind of working for us and that it's really reflecting our current circumstances. A lot of what you're going to see in here is actually trying to help us to focus in on specifically things that might benefit us during the budget process. So a lot of the changes that are proposed, especially in your redline version here, is primarily there to kind of benefit Jana, uh, Dylan and myself and others as well as we kind of head on through this biennial budget process. It also helps to provide a good reminder for everyone of what the financial management policy states, and let me just actually get into the presentation a little bit. And in addition to that, a longer clean, but cleanup effort, if it's really kind of necessary, should really take place on that off, off budget year. So ideally, twenty twenty five will be having kind of a broader discussion about um, what we should do with the financial management policy, how we may want to adapt that and focus on some other sections as a part of that overall. Now, what's kind of the value in?
Ask a question real quick, I'm sorry, I, I think I'm probably thinking of this wrong. Wasn't there a document that F and A worked on last year really extensively, is that the one that we're talking about?
It's.
The same, is that the same document?
Back in twenty twenty two, uh, yes, the uh, F and A committee certainly worked on developing the financial management policies which haven't been updated or were not updated for a good ten to twelve years or so, and so there was a huge cleanup effort associated with that. What we want to get to is a stage where this is working much like the clock, where we're continuously bringing it back to you about every two years or so, right? Or just kind of a check in to make sure that it's really working for us. And I think once we kind of reach that kind of stage, I'm feeling that we're getting to be a much more professional organization when you are seeing these things, things on a recurring basis, so.
But the, the cleanup that, that you refer to here isn't as big as that, it's, it's like upkeep.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
For sure. Um, so what that said was the value in adopting financial management policies, well, it helps us to institutionalize, uh, institutionalize good financial management practices, it will help elected officials, management and staff make good financial, financially sound decisions. In addition to that, it also helps to provide stability and continuity over the years the staff and elected officials turn over. So we've got a record here, which if I were to leave, for examples, a new finance director will come on board and really put into practice these financial management policies, so you'll see that consistently depending on whoever's in this position, whoever is up here for the most part, um, and you'll get a track record over time. In addition to that, it helps us to clarify strategic content for financial management, helps us to find the boundaries, uh, specifically providing control over courses of action taken by management, helps to provide that kind of flexibility for management to exercise discretion in carrying out policy. It's really beneficial when it comes to good bond ratings, so we've had a conversation here recently uh, with our financial advisor about bonds and the necessity for say a double uh, A rated bond or triple A rated bond. These are really critical uh, overall to achieving that uh, through our uh, rating agency, which is S and P. Uh, it also promotes long term and strategic thinking, helps us to manage those risks to find uh, financial condition overall and helps us to comply with established public management best practices. I'm going to start getting into the update a little bit of what you're going to find in your packet overall. Focusing on section two point oh, uh, reserves and fund balance, uh, what we did is we added a fund type definitions, uh, fund type definitions as established by the budgeting, accounting, reporting system manual, the Washington State Auditor's Office, so you'll see that in your section two point zero. In addition, we have also established or revised uh, some of the reserve level targets for each of the fund types if necessary. Um, we made sure to incorporate Councilmember Hallways' comments from the last F and A session, uh, excluding the ARPA COVID Local Recovery Fund from that, uh, those were serve level targets overall. And also, we, as a part of this section, have clarified the use of excess fund balances above the reserve level target. Uh, per section three point oh, uh, revenues, we have clarified the city's objective when utility rate uh, from one customer class subsidizes the utility rates from another customer class, making sure that we develop a plan and that we put that plan in place and that we work on that plan and make sure that that subsidization doesn't take place. Furthermore, section five point oh, uh, which is the budget section, uh, we have clarified the level at which council may appropriate funds. Uh, and we have also added a section that allows the administration to make personal adjustments within the limits of appropriation authority when they do not increase the city's ongoing expenditures relative to ongoing revenue or change service levels negatively, which uh, was in addition from Councilmember Christensen, uh, from the last F and A committee. Uh, furthermore, section six point oh, the capital budget, uh, we have revised the definitions of capital outlet, capital program and capital project, but not terribly different, just in my own words and how I like to describe those different programs and um, the projects itself. In addition, we have established the appropriation level for the capital budget at the program or project level, which will allow the city to establish continuing appropriations budget for capital progress and projects. Um, the one example that I like to bring up is, you know, you've seen it as part of Hens Agenda Bill earlier today with the Kimball Creek uh, construction, agenda built for the most part, often as a part of your budget table, we're providing you with two columns, what is life of project budget and what is the budget for this biennial? The goal with this to have a continuing appropriation budget is to be able to strike out that uh, biennial budget section and actually just focus on the life project budget itself. And ideally, that will provide better clarity overall to council about what we're focused on, which is remaining within that total project budget regardless of the year we're in or within the biennial we're in. In addition to that, uh, we have added a CIP progress reporting section to ensure that council receives timely progress reports on the CIP, including budget versus actual reporting, which is uh, thanks to Councilmember Johnson for that suggestion as well. In addition, in terms of seven point oh debt management, we have clarified that revenue sources independent of the general fund can support council manic limited tax general obligation bonds, which as you know, part of the conversation that we have regarding the CIP is what funding source is going to support, for example, a proposed five point two uh, million dollar line of credit that would then roll into an eight point two million dollar bond uh, issuance in twenty twenty six. And lastly, for section nine point oh, long term financial planning, we just wanted to note that the city maintains multiple long term financial models, not just one. And so with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have um, when it comes to this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Council, do we have any questions? Councilwoman, or Cotton?
Guys kind of look.
All right, I'm sure he's here.
I'll check.
I, I just, um, reading through, um, I actually just had a question on, um, the, let's see, uh, I'm looking at uh, ten point one, oh, uh, uh, under section ten point one, um, the city council will demonstrate their independence from the administration by establishing financial management policy and directly communicating with the state auditor's office as part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conferences. Is that something that's being done annually by the council?
If you don't mind, just let me take a second to read it.
Yeah.
So indeed, uh, we do often have entrance as well as exit conferences, uh, we are currently working on the twenty twenty one uh, financial and accountability audit as we speak. It's actually getting fairly close to wrapping up in total, which means, yes, we will be eventually proposing to council an exit conference in which uh, the state auditor's office would come to you to actually report on what they found during that audit. So um, indeed, we'll be getting the results from the state auditor's office, but they'll have an opportunity to kind of present those findings to answer any questions you may have. Uh, usually the entrance conference, we may suggest that, but usually they're just kind of outlining very kind of typical procedures of what they would go through, and so often council isn't necessarily involved, uh, on occasion, your mayor pro temp might uh, often sit in on that and actually report back to the council what he hears during that entrance conference.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What's, what's a clear question? Ten. Second paragraph, okay. Second. No, you've got to be quick, there may be some word clarification there, because.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Uh, I'm just, she's, uh, got a good point, we may want, there may be some word clarif, I mean, we the council do not meet independently, it's an independent word, I'm kind of.
Yeah.
Independently with the state auditor. Um, they do come in, as you said, present to us and everything else, but that's as a council. They do come in, as you said, present to us and everything else, but that's as a council with administration and everything else.
So the the words that I'm
Yeah.
Kind of hinging on is directly communicating. And so in my opinion is there's typically is direct communication between council directly with the state auditor's office without any sort of mediation with the administration in between. So those were the kind of focus words for me within that paragraph.
Counselor Wharton?
Thank you. As being the person that is has been responsible for nonprofit audits as as the finance chair for those organizations, it's typical that as the board representative that I meet with the auditors before they commence their work to make sure that we're on the same page as here's the financial policies and it's just kind of that independence from the work of the auditors. And then when they come back, then, you know, they've they've made sure that those policies that the council put in place are being truly followed. So it's it's kind of bringing it to the attention, not saying that, you know, there's anything that's misappropriated, but just to make sure that when you take a look at the audit, that these are the things that are concerning for us. So I think it's, you know, out of Drew's defense this evening, it's it's appropriate to have that in this as as kind of the procedure. And it just, it gives that independence that's needed so that there's a balance between the auditors and what what is happening on the day to day level.
And we have had that in the past, when I was a council member, I met individually with the state auditor and ran through a list of questions and talked about if you had any concerns. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I am struggling with the wording. Because it says demonstrate their independence from the administration by establishing financial management policies. Which, I mean, that's not, that's not what happened. I mean, we didn't meet as an F and A committee, say, hey, admin. Go and step out. We're going to have a chat and then we'll tell you, here's what we think we should do to change our financial management policies. I feel like that is what is implied by what is said here.
Right. That that's why I'm not really suggesting a change. I think there's some wordage that needs to go on. And yes, we as council at any time can go to the state auditor and say you know, have a question or whatever. But I'm, I again, as you said, this implies that we do, we have an independent closed meeting with the auditor, whatever. I don't think we need to do that. I don't think, I'm not, so I'm not proposing a change, but we need some clarification on these words to get that implied activity pulled back a little bit.
Yes, Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, it's just, I mean, the way that I that I read this as someone who is not a legalese expert or an accountant or anything along those lines. It just looks to me like that's what this is saying happened. So maybe it is understood within the industry that I'm just reading this totally wrong. It just makes it sound to me like that's what we did, that we said, hey, administration, here's what we would like to do with our financial management policies. So, yeah. I struggle with that.
Counselor Wharton?
But it goes back to division of power. And if you're part of a nonprofit that is being audited and they have to be audited every year, the CEO, the the executive director is not engaged in that conversation between the auditors and the treasurer or the audit committee chair. In in this case, it would be F and A and and the mayor pro tem. It's a, it's between the auditor and the council's representative, which would be the mayor pro tem and the administration. There's a separate conversation that goes on between the auditor and the and and the administration, but it's a privy of the council to make sure that there's independence and and it is a is that the audit process is is very transparent in what the auditors are looking at. So I think there's a little bit of, you know, perhaps a a disconnect in in thinking that we're excluding the administration, but it's really truly to make sure that the work that's supposed to be done and supposed to be reported back to the council is accurate.
Counselor Johnson?
Okay. Is it important for this process and for accreditation ratings and whatever else? And the report that we get back from the state daughter's office, that the council establishes financial management policies independent from the administration? Or is that not an important part of the process? In which case, why mention it?
Mayor Proton Hallway?
But we, I waited. Sorry. But what we're doing tonight is establishing those policies.
Yes.
Okay, nothing changed there, but if you, the, that, that paragraph seems to imply that there is a there's an, there is a standard separate process for the council to engage with the auditor when we get into audits. That is an option for us at all times. But our practice has been on on a normal audit that we engage with staff and the mayor in the exit and interview and all that, and that staff and mayor here for the exit report out what they do to council. So I don't want to imply that we would have a standard meeting separate from that. It would be a reaction to something else that would would cause that. So I just think there's some, we need to look at some wordage here to kind of pull back that we have the option to do independent actions, but for the most part, it's better if we work it as a team with engagement to the auditor.
Counselor Button?
So I've gone through this process six times as the audit chair, being the finance director for nonprofits, which operate under the same thing. Those meetings are always the, the entrance exam is only with the treasurer, two different organizations, by the way. The exit is also just with, it's a phone call at the end to say, hey, we just finished up. These are the things that we're going to bring forward. Those things will be brought forward to everyone, but that's just kind of the standard operating procedure of my experience has been the entrance and the exit, and it's between the auditors and the chair of the finance. And I, I can't imagine it being much different for governmental.
Government nonprofit.
Yeah, but but still, it's an audit process.
Please, and I expect the auditor to, if we're doing something wrong, I'd expect they would have said something to to date. They have never said anything that they require a separate council only discussion.
It's not council.
Or F and A.
It's it's audit chair. Which comes from the council. Comes from the government body, the governing body, which we are.
Counselor Christiansen?
So my question, and maybe the interim city attorney can address it, is it it sounds like we either need to change the language in what is in our proposed financial policies or we need to change our actions. And we may need to ask our legal counsel if there is something that we should be doing differently. I don't know whether that would be in this forum or separately. Or whether we have the discretion to decide between option A and option B. Does that make sense?
I'm happy to address. Uh, so council member, you're putting your finger on a good point, which is that I've never seen a council independently draft financial policies. The inde- the independent judgment that you bring is whether or not to approve the ones presented to you. And if you don't like them, point out the things you would like to change. So I think that, I think really what the exercise that the council can do to fulfill its obligations as a steward and custodian of public funds is to review with a fine tooth comb, which you guys clearly have, the policies presented for you. And if you don't like something in it, direct what you think ought to be changed about them. But I don't think there's any obligation for you to independently derive them on your own with no guidance from staff. That would be a really difficult task and I don't, I can't imagine anybody actually doing that.
Counselor Johnson?
Well, then I wonder, I think maybe the word that I'm getting hung up on then is the word establish. It sounds to me like based on this language that we are establishing them, when perhaps we are adopting them, we change the word from establish to adopt?
Do you want to have a comment regarding that? Counselor Christiansen?
I'm comfortable with the revision proposed by Councilmember Johnson and then maybe adding up for the revision at the second half of the sentence that currently states directing communicate directly communicating with the state auditor's office as part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conferences as needed or at their own discretion. And then I think that that might solve that.
Reproton Haller?
I guess I have one kind of combining both. It's the council will establish uh, financial management policy and strike directly and communicate with state auditor's office as part of annual financial audit entry, exit reviews, period.
You don't like adopt?
Uh, no, I'm trying really the independence clause and the directly with auditor, which implies again, we have the option to do that. But it's much more efficient if we do it with the administration and just participate in the process.
Counselor Johnson?
Are you okay with the word adopt instead of establish?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to do what he said.
So the city council will adopt financial management policies and communicate with state auditor's office as part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conferences, period. I I motioned to have that moved in as second paragraph, section ten point one, may I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Mayor Proton Hallways, second by Counselor Johnson with the motion that our mayor pro tem just made. Any further discussion on that?
Drew, did you write that down? Are you going to make me do it again?
You went a little fast.
Counselor Johnson?
Can I ask Mayor Proton just to say it one more time?
Do it again.
One more time.
The city council will adopt financial management policies and communicate with the state officer's office as part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conferences.
Figured taking out the word directly communicating.
Direct, yeah, taking out the word directly and getting away from that in the the independence. We have the option, but I don't want to say we're going to do it every time.
Counselor Johnson?
Now, the what I could imagine could be a A plus of having something about independence is if that helps out with something like our our credit rating or something along those lines, or if that's something that the state auditor looks for is that the council acts independently in some way. And if there's some specific reason why it would be good to have that word independently, if not, then never mind. I'd just like to know, is there, is there some import to the word independence?
So what I would share with council is you have lawmaking authority, right? In essence, the administration cannot make law. This policy will be adopted right by council, independent of whatever I say up here, right? For the most part, you could reject what I say uh, for the most part. So you do have that, I think, independence overall, just the adoption of the policy. Faces.
Reproton Hallway?
Well, well. Yes and no. Uh, one, yes, the the legislate legislation authority resides here as well, as well as overall your responsibility to community. But so that's, that's breaking, that's a division of authorities, check and balance, all that stuff. If we were to do that independent of you, Drew, God help us. So you participate in that.
Yes.
We adopt the policies in collaboration.
Right.
Okay, so I I don't want it to imply that we, the council, go off and dream up manage, financial management policies independent of our financial directors' advice and counsel. Uh, so we're not independent. We work, we collaborate, we're work together, but eventually the authorization or approval resides here of those policies.
Counselor Wharton?
I'm going to disagree. Given my experience in the past, this is a governing body.
What, your experience in the past?
This is a governing body. We pass policy and it's up to the administration to follow through on that. The role of the audit is to ensure that the policies we pass, because we give the authority to the administration and to the rest of the staff that is being followed. When we take that away, we're taking away the checks and balances. And that's the reason why I'm opposed to it. Is the audit process has a place and it's to make sure that between policy that's set and it doesn't make any difference whether it's, you know, a city council or a governance of a corporation, which is a nonprofit's body, that there is a separation of po- policy and implementation. And that's exactly what the audit comes in, make sure that the monies that come in this year, spent this year, if they fall into next year, then there's got to be an accountability for it. But it also means reviewing expenses that are done, were they done within our policy? And that policy comes from here. And that's why it's important having that word independent in there is that's the process of an audit is make sure that policies that we adopt are followed. And if they are, we get a stellar rating. And it shows that everything that the administration, including the staff, are doing is to what we directed them to do. So I I think we're trying to, trying to to look at this maybe slightly different, saying we're not working together. We are working together. We set the policy, we set the budget that the mayor recommends. And then when we make adjustments, are those adjustments being properly made? And that's part of the audit process. Are those things being followed? So anyway, that's, that's kind of the difference between where I think some of us are at and and, you know, others that have been through this process in other, in other governance forms.
Counselor Washington?
Thank you. So Councilmember Witten, I I I think I'm there with you and I just want to make sure that we're in the same paper, that I'm understanding you correctly. You're, sounds like you're struggling with that, that word independence, having that word independence in the clause. For reasons.
Taking it out.
No. Struggling with it not being in there.
Yeah.
For the reasons you just stated.
Right.
Because we act, we are an independent branch, in essence.
Counselor Johnson?
If we were to have it back in, where I would want it is with regard to the communicating with the state auditor's office as part of the entrance and exit exams. But I don't want it as part of the establishment of financial management policies. I think that the establishment of the financial management policies is a collaborative thing. And I I I wouldn't know what to think of having that as being an independent process. However, the communicating with the state office's office being an independent thing that I could get on board with.
What do you think of that? Okay, then I'll make a motion. Yeah, I just, I just want to kind of read this here because I'm not, I don't know, maybe I'm just not getting my head around it. So when I read this, the city council will demonstrate their independence from the administration by establishing financial management policy. That to me doesn't necessarily mean that we can't work in collaboration with the administration. But ultimately, getting back to Councilmember Witten's point, I think the establishment of that policy. Councilmember one? How how would you, because I, I understand what you're saying, but I probably not articulating it the best way. The buck stops here, in essence, the buck stops with the legislative branch on an oversight process, right? Sorry.
Counselor Wharton?
So just, just for clarification, again, we set policy, we don't handle implement. Handle implementation, that's the administration, that's the staff. We just hand that over, and then when the audit comes up, all we're doing is we're simply saying, okay. You know, I I want to make sure that we're looking at X, Y, Z. Not saying that there's anything wrong, but I just want to make sure. You know, as a checkmark that. Things are being followed as we had intended, because we don't look in a finite way of of. Um, how money is being spent and how it's being recorded and and, you know, is it a long term debt, is it a short term debt? That's that's the auditors or weaknesses, potential weaknesses in just um. How things are handled internally to make sure that um our taxpayer dollars are doing what we intended them to do in the first place.
Councilor Bittson?
So I. I appreciate this. This is this is really, I think, I think um the points that Councilmember Watten have made has made about uh. About establishing the policies and the way you articulated is the buck stops here, I think is really important, and I don't, and I and I agree, I don't think that it means that we. Don't work in concert and the resources the administration have, like Mr. Butte, we also have, and we we work together on that, but. Establishing a a point at which the buck stops is important, and uh so. I I I do like that um. The that independent. Just for that, just for that purpose, it doesn't mean that that there's not going to be complete collaboration in it, uh but. Worst comes to worst, and there's not, we need to know who established it, who establishes that.
Mayor Pro Tim Hallway?
Okay, guys, um. Partially, I think you've repeated what I said, but no in front of it. But I want to separate. The how and the what. What the council will do, and as the motion originally stated, will adopt financial management policies and participate in the. Audit. Uh, in entrance and exit reviews. How the council does that is up to council. Okay, the the word. Independent is a how. I don't think it needs. Uh, and it implies other encumbrance that I don't necessarily think. Uh, it's meant to. But I I fully agree, we adopt the policy, it is ours. We participate in the exit, the entrance and exit reviews, that's. Ours to make sure that our policies are there represented and that any of the concerns of council are there represented. Whether we do that independent or with advice from administration, or we hire a consultant to help us out, that's a how and we can decide as we get into that. Okay, but for clarity, I I I don't, I don't need to demonstrate my independence from administration. I have a responsibility. To adopt those policies and to participate in the audit.
Councilor Watten?
My experience has been, I've. And and this is a, there there are books written about um audit processes. I I gave one of them out last week, so. Somebody, no, somebody wanted to start one, it's here, it's a book. But but I've never have had a conversation between myself and the executive, the executive director saying, hey, you know, we've got this audit coming up, I want your input on it. It has always been from the standpoint of the finance committee, these are the policies that we want to make sure that you're looking at. You know, restricted funds coming in are going to restricted funds. We have restricted funds, they're 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 utility funds. And that they're not being spent for general purpose funds. Those are kind of the conversations that happen between. The the audit committee or from the finance director, or in our case, it should be from the F and A. Chair to the auditors, you know, these are the things that I want to just make sure that. We have the right systems in place, that's part of the audit, it's not a conversation of going over to the administration and saying. Hey, you know, what are the things you want us to steer clear of in the audit, and that's where the independence, not to say, I know things are stellar. But that's the independence and making sure that that the auditor is focused on the things that matter to us most. To make sure that our systems are very strong, and I believe that's our case, is we have very strong systems, but. But otherwise, there's there's this opportunity for collusion, you know, if. If if we didn't have that independence between us and the administration, the administration knows what's going on, we don't necessarily know, and that's what. Part of the role of the auditor is being that independent third party to come in, they kind of play, you know, the the the. Court, if you will, just to make sure that things are going well, and that's kind of the division of power, so.
Mayor Pro Tim Hallway?
Let's do one highlight the in. This last one and several prior, the auditor does contact mayor, contact, when I was Mayor Pro Tim, has contacted me, has had a Zoom conference of what what do you want us to look at and everything else? That does occur.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Good.
Independently.
Excellent.
It it's me and the auditor.
Okay, okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
Councilor Johnson?
Um, okay, uh, where I'm at again. Is that uh if we say that we independently establish financial management policies, that to me means. That the council is the ones that are coming up with the financial management policies and uh. That's just how I read it. I I don't know how to read that in any other way, it's independently, that means that we're the ones doing it. Uh, but for the second part. Connecting with the state auditor's office for the interest in exit exams, uh exams, finals are coming up. Uh, conferences. The uh, yeah, that uh, I think uh, it's it sounds like has been historically independent, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, ask quick. I was still stuck on exam.
Yeah. That process of uh uh the entrance and exit conferences has historically been done independently of the administration, is that what you were saying a minute ago?
There has been engagement between the auditor and the mayor pro tem independent. Now, you may consider the entrance and exit. Meetings as an entity up to themselves, and they usually happen as a joint meeting, but there are other uh engagements outside of those. Uh, entrance and exit reviews. Such as, again, the auditor does usually contact Mayor Pro Tim and say, these are the areas we're looking at, do you have any other concerns that we ought to folk add to this? Um, and what would you like us to look at in particular?
Did you have a follow up?
Yeah.
And then.
Then uh, I'll move that we uh say um and. Directly communicate independently with the state auditor's office, blah, blah, blah. So we add the independent for the communication. As it makes sense grammatically.
So we already have a motion on the table.
Yeah, so.
So we're adding to that.
So what's the motion on the table?
Oh, you're right, this is a second bill, dinosaur.
So was there a second to this one?
I'm not, you guys do what you want, I'm not arguing anymore.
I think we beat this horse.
Point of point of order. It does, does the motion die for the lack of a second?
I'm waiting for anyone a second, so does die for lack of second, Councilor Benson?
Uh, I I just wanted to make an imperfect analogy to just not to explain it, but to explain how I'm thinking about it. My wife and her partner. Independently established their business. Uh, it's a school. Um, they independently established that business. It didn't mean that they built all the buildings. Um, it didn't mean that they, I. You know. Put the roads in all around it or or put the fence around it or, but but it wasn't a school until they independently established it. And that's the way I'm thinking about this, the whatever the policy is, is not the policy until we independently establish it. And I think Watten's point that. That that responsibility has to remain with the council specifically is a good one. Uh, the buck does need to stop somewhere, and it's with council, so that's the way I'm thinking of the phrase independently established.
Motion on the table, do we have any other comments regarding it? We'll ask. City clerk, Councilor Christensen?
I would just request that the dinosaur that we're currently working on be read back so that.
I'm sorry, ask you to do it again.
Dean, can you read back that motion that's on the table, please?
And directly communicate independently with the state auditor's office as part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conferences.
That one didn't get a second, correct?
Yeah, that one died, yeah.
So it was modify the second paragraph of section ten point, the state council will adopt financial management policy and communicate with the state auditor's office as part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conferences.
Were you voting?
Everyone fine with that? I'm just looking, people are thinking. Councilor Watten?
May we have that restated one more time, please? Can we put it off on the?
Uh, modify the second paragraph of section ten point one, the state council will adopt financial management policy. And communicate with the state auditor's auditor's office as part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conferences.
And just for clarity, can can we have it read one more time as it was prior to this? Please.
For that. That motion.
I I want to, I want to hear the difference between the between the two wordings.
I have.
Could.
I, so I can read, I'll read the previous one, so this. City council will demonstrate their independence from the administration by establishing financial management policy and directly communicating with the state auditor's office. As a part of the annual financial audit entrance and exit conference.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this? Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, Dave?
Nay.
Nay.
Yes, so it's opposed by Councilor Watt. Councilor Benson and Councilor Washington, yes. Right. So. The big dinosaur is still the the overall financial policy, so is there any other? Comments regarding the financial policies?
There's another phrase in paragraph.
Call the question.
Ourselves, could you imagine? Did you just call the question?
No, don't.
Any other? Comments? All right. So going back to the adoption of the revised financial policy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, Nate? All right, they are unanimous and they are adopted.
This is the paragraph you thought you rose.
So sorry, so sorry.
We do the whole thing.
Obviously, it was an important discussion, we had it.
Yes, it was. Well, good job, good job. Okay, for the committee of the whole, we have deliberation on and review of the mayor's proposed twenty twenty five to twenty twenty. Twenty thirty CIP non utilities. We have our CIP manager gamble. Answer any questions? And so you handed out the sheet?
Hey, uh, can I make a.
For Benson?
Can I make her out like a like a three minute bio? Break request, I think I could use a minute to see if I could. Man, get caffeinated for recess.
Very fine, we'll be recess for five minutes, we'll actually be back by eight. Eight forty.
Forty?
Yep.
Don't move though, stay right there.
Please pause. Pause the recording.
It's gonna be door fries. Audience members. Speaking around this.
All right, we are coming back for a five minute recess, and now we begin the deliberation and review of mayor's proposed twenty point five to twenty thirty CIP non utilities. We have our CIP manager Dylan Gamble.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, I just wanted to kind of give a quick introduction and repeat the efforts that they're at, uh, this fair time. Which is to say that the process of the last month or the last few, uh, council and. Uh, the two committees, uh, F and A and Parks Public Works have included some considerations for how the community center interacts with CIP. We've had our financial advisor in here at the previous council meeting to uh discuss and go over uh consequences for bonds as well as looking at. Interest rates, how all that ties into the project, the. The kind of options, so to speak, and option errors of the different choices that council has. And uh, I wanted to make sure that we provided more time to uh have opportunity for a discussion, so we do not have any further presentations to be. More additive to the discussion, however, you have all the same materials that have been. Reviewed so far, and uh, yeah, I, we have the entire team that's been working on this document and. Uh, many of the projects that are within it, and so we're here to answer questions if there are any and leave room for that and some final follow up to that, the last bit is that we're hoping to look at a. Final adoption of this document and the next. Uh, councilman, so. The, it should be called the final review of the mayor's proposals. However, council chooses that, of course, but uh, that's. Tracking with our CIP uh schedule that was that Mr. Butte. Went through a few months ago now, so we're tracking, but that's a, that's what it means to track, so we have called it out according to that schedule. Um, and all yield.
I think on Saturday, we had a great overview of some of the projects as we visited the sites and talked about in more detail some of the items. So.
That was really helpful.
Yeah. Council, we have. Questions or comments do you have tonight? Mayor Pro Tim Hallway?
I'll I'll incite conversations. One, uh, I no longer see the ladder truck on here. Um, are we not doing large buildings in the city now? Larger buildings?
You can't get around the streets.
Okay. Uh, sorry, did I interrupt?
No, she's.
Yes, the ladder truck is not present on this document. It definitely can be considered by the city, of course, uh, it is not included on this for a couple of small reasons, one. That it doesn't work well as a capital improvement project. It works better as a budgetary item, so within the budget at large, rather than specifically called out within the CIP, the capital improvement plan. Um, I don't think there's a, there's not a hard and fast rule for a lot of the decisions like this, but if you look at other jurisdictions, they don't capture new vehicles or new vehicle assets within their CIP. Except for utilities. So we chose to to take it out, there's other reasons for it to be not present in this CIP that. It's like might be bending out of my uh. Terrain, so I want to yield the floor to that one a bit, but. Yeah, so we're gonna pull up the fire chief basically to answer this question for you, thank you.
Bailey?
We all go away.
Specific question as to why it's not on there?
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Uh, I think there there's been some presentations at the public safety committee. Meetings um going over some of the past decisions by the previous fire chief about the. The uh, the ladder truck, although we're saying that it's not necessarily important in the future, looking at the needs of the department right now in regards to staffing. In regards to vehicle acquisition and the two engines that we have right now in the replacement. Uh, my understanding and my feeling is that it's something that um we don't need at this time, it doesn't affect our accreditation. Uh, we have partner agencies around us that do have a ladder truck, it's not going to. Like I said, it's not going to affect our accreditation, the one thing that it is going to affect in the short term would be the. The WSRB rating, which is part of insurance, but again, having, although it would give us more points. It wouldn't give us enough to move one level lower, right now we're a class four, having a ladder truck is not gonna, by itself is not gonna have us move down to a class three. Having a ladder truck is not going to, by itself is not going to have us move down to a class three. There's a lot of other things that would have to happen. Uh, so based on those factors, I think we have some other things that we need to tackle first. Um, in like I said, in regards to the vehicle, uh, the, the second engine that's going to need to be replaced sooner. And then also the staffing levels, because we just don't have the, we just don't have the bandwidth of staffing right now. And if we had a ladder truck, it would mean either we'd have to hire a lot more firefighters, or we would have to triple cross staff our units, which means the engine, the aid car and the ladder truck would be staffed by one crew of three, which isn't done in King County, which isn't done really anywhere. Um, and it's, it's just not feasible with the training requirements that they would have to have to be a functioning ladder company. Again, this is something that we can look at in the future, but in the short term of the capital improvement plan for this next budget cycle. My feeling is I don't think that it's, it's something that we need to work on right now.
Councilor Christensen?
I was just going to say, chief, it's my recollection that when you brought it before public safety, one of the other comments that you'd made too was that having a ladder truck within so calming at this time would not necessarily be beneficial to this, excuse me, the residents that are here, because even though we would be able to get the ladder truck on site quickly, it would not be deployable in the event that there was a fire in a large building until additional rigs and personnel were able to arrive on site. Is that accurate?
That is correct. It's, it's, it's not what you see on TV. A ladder truck isn't going to pull up and automatically put up its ladder and start pulling people out of windows. That's just not feasible. It's not functionally possible. Um, the first arriving units are going to be focusing on fire attack, search and rescue, setting up command. The actual getting on a roof and or performing a rescue from a window with a ladder. Although it could happen, it would come down the line and, and that's why it wouldn't, you know, the way that we're fully deployed right now. It makes sense that it could come from another agency further away from us because it's probably going to be used either as a, um, more than likely be used as a defensive measure where it'd be put up to direct water onto the fire defensively. Or to get, like I said, to get into a, a commercial building, but there are other ways to do that through interior staircases. Uh, a ladder truck on a residential fire is not going to be going necessarily on the roof and due to lightweight construction and fires. And even if we do need to get somebody up on a roof, we can do it with ground ladders. So the one place that we wouldn't be able to use it would be a commercial uh, situation. But again, the, the ladder truck getting to the roof in a commercial occupancy is probably further down the list. The quickest way is to get in, put the fire out. Or, you know, enough to get the, the residents out and then worry about the property. So that's why I think the ladder could be further down the list and the fact that it'd be coming from Issaquah, Bellevue or Redmond, that delay and then responding isn't going to affect our operations the way we currently operate.
Councilor Christensen?
Follow up. Thank you, Mayor. And then it was my further understanding that if we were to have a ladder truck here, it would likely be pulled away to accidents, for example, on I ninety or other things, which were then if we had one crew that was staffing all three of the, the apparatuses, then that we would have nobody within still calling to react to any other calls that came in.
Correct. The way that the, the response plans are currently set up in King County, which all the King County departments are trying to standardize and have for quite a few of our responses, standardize the response for the, the run card. Uh, residential fires call for two ladders, um, initially. The two closest. So if we were a ladder truck that was cross staffed, we would be getting called to, not only would be getting called to Issaquah, we'd probably be the closest second unit toward Redmond and Bellevue, a lot of the time pulling us out of the city more. And also the ladders, a lot of times are used as a blocker on the freeway. Um, to, which is an important function to protect the crews. Um, but that's also a two, two million dollar roadblock, which could be utilized as a, a fire engine could do the same thing. And for the same thing you just mentioned, we're going to get called to, to car accidents up highway team more often, down I ninety into Issaquah, because we'd be the next closest, um, ladder truck.
Thank you. Council Benson?
So are you saying there is no need for a ladder truck here?
In my opinion, at this time, there's no need for a ladder truck. The way our department is currently staffed down the road.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking. That's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, is there, because I've asked you this question before. And when I asked you this question before, what we were told is that there is a need for a ladder truck and that the place that makes the most sense for that ladder truck to go within the region is Snaw Quami. And I think that's where the previous chief was thinking about the ladder truck, that there is a regional need for a ladder truck. What you're saying is something different. What you're saying is sure, there's a lot of things that, that we need, and then there's what we can afford. That's a different, that's a different argument. Um, but, but from what I understood when we talked about this months ago, there is a need for a ladder truck in this region and the place that is most central to the need is Snaw Quami. But, but your argument was that it would be detrimental to the department because of the expense involved in operating it.
I would say that, I would say that's a correct statement, but I would like to clarify when you're saying as our location of Snow Quami, the most sense regionally, yes, but it having a fire, a ladder truck in Snow Quami isn't the most sense for Snow Quami regionally, but for our region as to where ladder trucks are spaced, yes, it does make sense that if so, if there was another ladder truck to be added and you asked my opinion as to where in King County, it would make the most sense. I would say out here just because of our distance from some of these other neighbors. But again, I wouldn't say that it would benefit the city of Snow Quami if it was out here. It would benefit the region, but it wouldn't benefit the city of Snow Quami if it was located here.
Fair enough, but when Chief Carrera suggested getting a ladder truck, truck, he wasn't coming out of left field. There is a need for a ladder truck in this region. But what you're saying is it would be so taxing to the city of Snaw Quami if we got one, that it would be detrimental to the city and the department.
I would say that's correct. And I can't speak for Chief Carrer because he's not here now, but from what I understand.
And the reason I'm, the reason I'm pressing this is because it felt like you were. It felt like there was criticism of the previous chief in those comments, and I don't think that's appropriate.
It, I would have to say to that, different leadership and different priorities. I believe that the ladder truck was used to bring more staffing to the fire department was one of the reasons why it was pushed. I'm in charge now and I'm giving my opinion, and I don't think that that is the right way to go about that. And when I look at it, I don't believe some of those statements. So it's a different, different person in charge, different priorities. So that, that, that's what I can say to that is I don't feel that the need for our department right now is a ladder truck.
Fair enough. Thank you.
For one.
Thank you.
And then come.
And, and I'm going to echo what Chief Bailey said, because we have a department of fifteen. And that's, that's three shifts or four shifts.
That's three shifts of four members.
And, and in order to have a ladder truck, you'd need to add a person to each shift. That would make us go from fifteen to eighteen in that department. And you start doing the numbers and then you look at, do we want equipment? That's functional and used all the time or equipment that is, goes outside to assist other communities? We do enough mutual aid assistance. We do our fair share. And when things, when we do need equipment, it rolls in. And, and I think, you know, we've seen how well this department runs for being independent, for being small. If it were King County and King County paying for this, it would change the dynamics. And the other one that we don't talk about, and that's the commercial developments and the, the, the taller buildings. They have fire suppression in them. It's, you'd be amazed at the amount of fire suppression. I had one business owner show me was so proud of his room that he has dedicated this almost as big as this room for fire suppression. So really, the, the um, the concerns are, um, staffing, we'd have to be much bigger and, uh, it's challenging because of our small department and what they have to be certified on. You put one more thing on. This is, you know, Swift Water, we're talking about EMS, and we're also talking about, about, um, just regular fire stuff. This is a fourth dimension. We just don't have that bandwidth in our size of a department, but it's exceptional department as well. So I, I put full faith in Chief Bailey and, and deciding that this is probably not the priority we need today.
Councilor Cotton, you had your hand up?
Um, yes, I certainly agree with the comments that have been made by the other council members and Chief Bailey that the amount of staffing we need to add, which we continue to lose staffing, so we continue to need to add staffing um, to be able to have, um, serviceable vehicles within our area. Regionally, you're right, uh, council member Benson, it might be a strategic location for the area, but the amount of use we would benefit from as a city, there are streets around here and up on the bridge where if there's parking on both sides of the streets, a ladder truck can't get through there. So it again, maybe, um, you know, being able to make the difference right now of upping our staffing. Um, we have twenty year old fire trucks. That is not acceptable. Um, constantly in the repair shop. So we need to update the apparatus that we have. And so, um, I fully rely on, uh, Chief Bailey's, uh, expertise in this matter as far as making the appropriate decisions about what's right for this city right now. Um, and, and not so much be worrying at this stage of the game with servicing the, the, the rest of the region with a ladder truck that's, that might be constantly out of the area.
And just to point out too, uh, when was the, when was the last CIP created where the ladder truck was added? I want to say it was two, four years ago. We didn't have some of the same staffing issues. We didn't have the same call volume that we did two or three years ago. Our call volume has gone up greatly. And like I said, and you mentioned is, I think our issues on the horizon are staffing and possibly down the road, having more units available in the city as in both an engine and an A car. And, and that was different from two, three years ago because our, you know, we were coming out of COVID, our call volume was pretty small. It's gone up quite a bit, you know, which I've showed you, you know, through the accreditation reports and the quarterly reports is we're in a different position than we were three years ago. And so that's what also has changed the landscape in regards to the type of calls that were going on and the, the, the higher response numbers that we're, we're dealing with.
Mayor Proton Holloway?
Okay, so, um, ladder truck was a concern enough that was put in as contingency or, um, development fund item for the Salish expansion based on the number of buildings that they were going to put in there. That didn't happen.
Mills. Oh.
I'm sorry, can I finish?
Sure.
That didn't happen. But in the meantime, I've got a new multi-story building going down here. I've got the mill site going on with seven additional large buildings. So I don't view that the requirement that we're getting a certain number of large buildings in the community has gone away. It may have shifted. It has not gone away. And we thought that originally was a requirement for a fire truck. Point number one. Point number two. Uh, ladder before the truck, that being I'm a little concerned that we're putting our level of service requirement for safety restricted by the staff we have versus what we think is the appropriate level of service we ought to have for safety, directing us to try and get to the staff we need. Okay, so I, I'm hearing these staffing concerns and everything else. Guys, if there's a safety reason for us to do this, and I think the original safety reason was a number of large buildings. And we haven't, that has shifted, potentially grown. Then yeah, we probably need to talk about staffing levels. And that, that, that's an appropriate level of service target for fire safety. Okay, so I, I can get around those conversations. I can't get around. I don't have staff to, to support the level of service you're asking me.
And I think the, to, to answer back to some of that is when you talk about, yes, we are getting some bigger buildings here in the city. I think it goes back to what the, what the ladder truck would be used for. Um, initially on those responses, like I said, if we, our initial crew when they show up is getting lines set up, it's establishing command. As soon as the second rig shows up and allows us to have the two in, two out, that's when they go inside to attack the fire, do the search and rescue. Getting a ladder truck up to put water on a fire from up above, like I said, it doesn't, you know, it's not feasible. Ladder trucks don't pick people out of windows like you see on TV. And, and that's where I'm saying, yes, a ladder truck down the road is in the response plan is important. It's important to have them here for those, uh, those commercial fires. But it's not the first, second, third use or fourth use of a, a rig coming on scene is not how a ladder truck, uh, would be utilized. Most of the time when a ladder truck shows up and they're not, you know, used for, for putting a ladder up to put water on the fire is they're, they're doing search and rescue. They're doing other, they're, uh, putting in a hose line, things that engines could also do all, could also perform also. So that's what I'm saying is yes, the ladder truck is important, but it's not important to be the first one on scene. And that's where I'm saying for the Snow Quami area, yes, we do have buildings that will eventually need a ladder truck. They don't need a ladder truck first because the crew is not going to be using that, even even if we had a fire in one of these multi-story buildings. If we showed up on scene with first with our ladder truck, the way that things are built out and for efficiency and the way that the fire scene operates, they wouldn't be using that ladder truck. They would be doing, setting up the initial lines, getting water on the fire. Cause really that's how you're going to get everything established and everything. The rest down is getting that fire out as quick as you can. Not getting a ladder up to cut a roof, a hole in the roof to do ventilation or anything like that. And that's where I'm saying, yes, they're important, but they're down the road. And that's because we have neighbors that do have ladder trucks that are willing to trade services back and forth. That's why I think it's hired lower down the priority list. If we didn't have a ladder truck in Issaquah, this might be a different conversation. We do have those partners that are close by that will provide a ladder up here. I believe it's twenty minutes, twenty five minutes that they would get up here from Issaquah. That would be adequate to handle a fire in one of these bigger buildings because we can do the other things with the engines that show up. Fall City, Snow Quami and, uh, North Bend, East Side. Will get things going, getting the water on the fire before we actually, we need a ladder truck.
I can take an argument of assumed fire practices change. I just, the other argument, I couldn't.
I, I understand, yeah.
Okay. Council Johnson?
Then the only other thing is, uh, that DA with the mill site, uh, has, uh, the ladder truck in it now.
Right.
Uh, what I'm trying to remember is, was that, that, uh, if one were to be purchased, that they would contribute a certain amount? Or was it any sort of requirement that we do get one at some point?
Um, it was a certain amount that they would pay, like a certain percentage.
But it wasn't in agreement from our side that we would get one. Is it if we did, it would contribute? Maybe we should double check it just to make.
Well, no, I, you know, if we decide not a ladder truck, then we could talk with them about just a regular. And I guess fire engine, what's, what's the?
Honestly, I wasn't part of those conversations, so I don't have that information.
Right. So if we decide, if we obviously need another truck coming up, and so they will help purchase a percentage of this truck. Or we can look at a pumper truck and discuss that with them. That they would still help with a certain percentage. We would need to negotiate that because it does state ladder truck. An agreement.
As, as long as we're not committed in that we have to get one at some point, then it's fine.
Right. If you buy one or when you buy one. Council Washington?
Could be things down the road. We could look at partnerships with some of our agencies. Maybe there's a partnership with Fall City. Maybe there's a partner East Side. If it comes down to it, where the city continues to build some of those buildings in a couple of years, maybe that is a discussion to have down the road. It's just, as I was saying, priorities at this time. It doesn't seem that it's there, but it is a conversation that isn't probably going to go away. We're still going to want to keep it as, as we go forward on our strategic plan. Or, um, things with, uh, the capital improvements in the future. It's just in the next two years, it didn't fit into what the department is currently looking at with in regards to responses.
Council Washington?
Thank you, Chief Bailey, for being here this evening. Um, really, really appreciate your, your insight. The only thing I'm having a small heartburn problem with is let's assume the ladder truck in Issaquah isn't available because it's being used. Is there any redundancy plan?
The way that it's set up and the reason why we're building all the different response plans to be the same and they're built on different levels, alarm levels, one, two, and three, is that it's going to get, it's going to pull them for the regional partners. So you know, our two closest ladder trucks would be Bellevue, Issaquah. After that, it's Redmond. After that, it's Kirkland. Bellevue has two of them, so more than likely we'd be getting them. East Side eventually is probably going to get two of them. So yeah, it's built into the system where it just looks for the closest unit. We don't have the jurisdictional boundaries anymore. Most of the I would say all of King County departments have gotten rid of the jurisdictional boundaries and made everything closest unit, whether it's engine, ladder, aid car, battalion chief. We've benefited from that because we've had the battalion chief from, you know, if you get a fire in Snow Quami, the battalion chief from East Side is going to be coming in because there's no jurisdictional boundaries. It's all, you know, for the safety of the firefighters, for the safety of the citizens, get the closest unit here with the capabilities. Regardless of the sticker that's on the side of it. But yeah, there are redundancies built in. Dispatch is set up to move units around and even there's move up policies too, which I was part of when I was the deputy chief managing that for all of King County. Is when a fire happens, there's a deputy chief that gets on the phone with dispatch and starts looking at that going, okay. All Snoqualmie units are out on a fire right now. They'll bring a, a fire engine from Bellevue to man if there's any aid calls that come in or vice versa. So they have move up plans based on those contingencies to cover all these. Granted, they might be coming from further away. The further, the bigger the incident, or if there's two or three incidents going at time, but there are, um, contingencies for getting a unit here. It's just a target commitment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. What other questions do we have regarding the CIP?
I guess.
Mayor President Holloway.
Still inciting conversation, um. So, um, I'm still remembering our conversations of where we were going with finance. In about two years, our revenue and expenses were going to cross. Uh, and I still have a couple of labor contracts out there. Yet in here, I see half a million dollars coming out of general fund and going into capital. So, uh, uh, I'm having a hard time balancing those two things together. I, I'm not comfortable taking half a million out of general fund right now.
He's got the center hurry.
All right. So, uh, thank you very much for that question, uh, Councilmember Holloway. So I'm going to share my screen.
Yeah, and I saw your footnote and I totally agree with it.
Yeah, no, it's, we want to make it very clear, right? So indeed talked about the tightness of the general fund right overall. And so consequently, taking five hundred thousand dollars out of, um, the general fund for the most part to support the, uh, CIP moving forward. Certainly does tighten the picture just ever so slightly for the most part. So we have to recognize that indeed uh, council passed the point one percent transportation sales tax. And as a consequence of the CIP and the resolution that we're going to be bringing forward. We're going to be trading the utility tax with the TIB. So the TIB is going to be moved into the capital fund. We're going to take a same dollar amount out from utility tax and move that back to the general fund so that there's no, um, differentiation between um, or offset necessarily there. Um, so with that said. We have presented a financial forecast, right? You know, a long time ago, uh, actually this was April, April twenty twenty-four. Where we presented, you know, columns, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, all the way through twenty thirty-two. And often what we're doing is we're comparing our ongoing revenues versus our ongoing expenditures and seeing when are those lines exactly going to cross overall. We have to keep in mind that indeed those lines are crossing. And right now as a part of this picture. I can go over to twenty twenty-seven and I can see that those lines are crossing. But what's very critical is to make, uh, this distinction between ongoing revenues versus, uh, and ongoing expenditures versus one-time revenues and one-time expenditures. So if we were to scroll down in this chart and look at the ending fund balance, we would note that our reserve fund is actually fully funded through twenty thirty-two. We are still at fifteen percent, right, of our reserve target overall. The general fund will decrease roughly from, you know, twenty twenty-four of two point to six million down to about fourteen thousand dollars. But keep in mind, that's reserve plus that fourteen thousand dollars in twenty thirty-two. So that is ten years away, right, for the most part. Um, if I were to present the picture with the five hundred thousand dollars. Which, uh, this version I updated May twenty-eighth because I anticipated this question.
He knows what you think.
Do, does this, does this have outstanding labor contracts in it?
So it's got the Teamsters agreement built into it. Uh, when we have those conversations about SBA, right, SPA for the most part. The goal with that proposal, and I think we'd probably have to be in closed session to actually have a discussion, no?
No, I mean, that was a, just a yes, no. I don't want to know the specific number because that would be inappropriate in this conversation.
I want to be mindful, right, of that. Um, and it may be more appropriate to actually have a discussion regarding that specific situation at that, you know, during closed session. Um, but anyway, with that said, you know what our goal is, right, which is eventually to get those costs. To make sure that it's a cost neutral proposal that we're bringing back to council. But currently what we've got in here is the SPA contract as it's been currently issued plus inflationary increases. So for example, we've been using King County as our kind of overall estimate of what, how inflation is going to change annually. Right, moving forward. So you're going to have those kind of increases built into, uh, what you see in this document itself. Now, what you would notice between this forecast and what you saw back in April. Let me just make sure this is the right May twenty-eighth version. Is there's really no change between ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures, right? Between the version that we saw in April versus the one I'm presenting here today, primarily because the five hundred thousand dollars that we're transferring is not an ongoing expense, right? It's a one-time cash infusion into our capital fund. So ideally kind of help reduce the, uh, bond itself and so on. Now, what does that do ultimately to your general funding fund balance as well as your reserve fund too? In twenty thirty-two, we would note that the general fund would eventually dip below zero. And as a consequence of that, we would have to use reserve funds in order to backfill. So in essence, what you're getting by moving five hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund and into the capital fund is you're moving the time in which we'd have to start using revert reserve funds up from twenty thirty-two to twenty thirty-one. And we feel that given the fact that's ten years in the future and that there's going to be probably a number of events that are going to take place between now and then. That it's a reasonable risk, right, to move five hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund and into, um, the capital fund to support that. If we do happen to find ourselves with a better revenue picture in the future, we may come back and actually recommend to council to take more of our excess fund balance out of the general fund and move that into the capital fund. Ideally reduce that, uh, line of credit, uh, at that time. But we're waiting for some of these discussions on the revenue increase, right, side of the picture to come forward before we kind of take that more of a major step in that direction overall to come back with a proposal to move more of the fund balance that we have in excess of our reserve target. From the general fund and into the capital fund.
Council Benson.
Well, I know we've had the, the conversation about these two lines crossing. And how that never goes away. That's just, that's always going to be, there's never a, a situation where those lines never cross. And we've solved the problem and ta-da, it's not going to be an issue. It's always going to be an issue.
Right.
And if it's not an issue, then we're withholding too much of the people's money.
Probably are taking too much in taxes and need to, yeah.
So it becomes, it, it becomes a question of to what extent can we use these reserves to, to solve current problems?
Target, anything above the reserve target.
Right. So, and, and that's what you're looking at. You're looking at whatever's above the reserve target. You feel that it, it's responsible to use that for these other means to alleviate, uh.
And to reduce the line of credit over here. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That, that's helpful for me. That, that's, that's all I need. Thank you.
What other questions do we have? Do we have concern, any questions regarding the community center expansion in the pool?
Yes.
You should hear him now because we hope, hope to vote in a couple of weeks. Council Washington.
Um, Director, could you put up the slides for the community center expansion project, please?
And so is this the slide?
Uh, let's see, I think, okay, so. Okay, so that top line there, sorry, I'm really not trying to be cool. I can't see this. Okay. Okay, so the one point nine five million that we spent, that we spent so far on the community center, it's my understanding that a million of that was county grant money. Is that true?
Essentially, uh, we have a county grant for a million, but not all the community reimburs for, uh, for design work. So part of it includes some construction elements to it. So we can't recover the entire grant unless or started.
Just a quick follow-up question. How much can be reimbursed? Because it. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to ra- raise a question. I wasn't on the council at the time, but I, I definitely followed this. It was my understanding that there was a million dollars appropriated from the grant for the build out, for the design piece.
No, uh, I think when we got the grant initially. We had targeted forty percent of it could be used for design. And sixty percent would go towards construction. That was our initial estimate. We applied for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so forty-five percent of it for design. So we do have approval to spend forty-five percent of that million dollars on design. Your other five fifty is for construction.
Council Benson.
That is not the way I remember the conversation. I remember asking this question specifically when we were talking about going to, to design. And being told that we had a million dollar grant and asking specifically, we can use that for the design? And the answer was yes. Um, the answer was not, well, forty to forty-five percent, yes.
So, yes, the reason why that is so, yes, it was, that's technically true. However.
By technically true, do you mean true?
Uh, it is true if we could have, if the money was available by the time, uh, at the time when we were going to ask for. So the way it worked out, we weren't, the money was not going to be available till the start of the year. At that point, we knew that we were burning through our design budget and we didn't. And there wasn't a million dollars left in the contract that we could charge in design for that. So what we had to do was guess essentially when we made the application is how much money was going to be left in phase one contract.
And we missed our guess by five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand dollars.
No, no, we were pretty close to, to correct. So by the time the end of the year came up, when the money was available, we had about half a million dollars left in the contract. So we ca- we guessed fairly close to be correct.
I don't have a perfect memory, but what I remember was a design project that we were told was going to be about a million dollars. A million dollars in grant money and being told that those, that that grant money could be used for that design. That's the way I'm remembering it. And that's the way I'm remembering justifying to myself a yes vote at that point. That's the way I'm remembering it. Um, and a, a, are you saying that I'm remembering it right? But then things changed after that?
I think that when, when the question was asked. What I recall is that we said, we'll look into that, find out. We came back, we said, yes, we can use that money for design. At the time, we did not know that the county was not going to make that money available to the start either. And at that point, we had to make a guess at how much was going to be left in the budget that we could get reimbursed for.
I wish I could take the yes vote back. I wish, I wish, yeah, I get my damn DeLorean. Okay, thank you.
Is there more questions on the slides? Council Wyden.
Okay. I just want to point out that the local government investment pool has remained consistent this past year. Kind of between, well, pretty close to five point four percent. So the average of one point nine five percent is historical. But for the time being, really, the number is five point four is what we're, we're getting back. So it, it kind of mirrors the construction costs changes historically. Because I really doubt in twenty-four or twenty-five. It's going to be much lower than where we're at today, five point four. It might be slightly lower, but um, anyway, just, just to keep things in perspective.
So I'll just add on top of that, that we've got two-year treasuries as well. So there are other things that we do invest on. I think if you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you also, you gave up a lot of this, right? Overall, for the most part, but it does fluctuate. Um, and I think it does fluctuate probably faster than some other. I'm correct, right, generally overall, so it.
It's, it's also based on the stock market. And the, just the pool of, of stocks that the state holds. And, and I, I would imagine bonds are probably part of their portfolio. We really dug into it, so.
It is a highly liquid investment pool. So they are generally investing in some very safe securities overall. So we can pull out the money from the LGIP within a day, uh, for the most part. A little sketchy on how much, right? You can pull at any one time and all that. Uh, but you can pull. So there is safety, right, generally in utilizing the LGIP. Uh, what I worry about is potentially those declines and declining, you know, over the next six months or so, right, for the most part, where we are falling behind the four point eight seven percent now. These are historical, right? Um, we're not presenting a forecast necessarily of exactly what's going to happen. And so they're just more rule of thumbs right now. What we're presenting is kind of a calculated risk, right, overall. And you have to determine, uh, from yourselves. What do you think is this going to look like today versus what you might see in two years' time? Uh, the, what we've presented as a part of the administration is, we think it's probably best from our position to lock in those prices today. Um, for the most part, so we're not going to see these inflationary increases when it comes to the cost construction index, which is what you've got here. Um, log in those prices today and then ideally in a year or two, we're going to be able to walk in really some additional grants to get that line of credit down. Um, so I think we're attempting to try to have ourselves and what you see as a part of the CIP both ways. You get the price today and ideally get the money that we need over the next year, year and a half, two years or so to really finalize this project, uh, and get it across the line in totality. Um, also as a part of this, it's a part of our discussion with King County. When it comes to the aquatics grant, um, there's some strategy involved. There's some strategy involved because I don't think King County necessarily, well, we have a fully funded package for the most part. Um, and they're going to say, yeah, let's go ahead and give the city a sufficient four million dollars. And so we have to keep that in mind as well as that we are trying to game plan this out when it comes to eventually obtaining or realizing some of those grants in the future.
Council Wyden.
Would it be fair to say that King County are the last dollars in on a project like that?
Are the last dollars in.
Right. As well as legislatures. We will go back to legislatures. This will be the budget year coming up. I've been told in the past that you'd like a project being last dollar in as well, so. And I think our project is so much further along than a lot of the other concepts for pools that are out there. So. Mayor President Holloway.
Bottom line, you have a project that is a five point two million dollar funding goal. And you're at, you're ultimately going to, you're asking the council to make a bet that we can go get other funds, whatever, to do it, or i- it's committing, it's committing us to a bond at some future date. Because we're, if we do this, we have to find a way to fund it. I'm really concerned about spending tomorrow's money today at a higher rate than would be appropriate if we do it the proper way of let's figure out what our funding is, let's go talk, get the grants we can, let's go in then and do a bond at the appropriate time. Um, we're trying to short circuit this. I hear the inflation things. I also know that, you know, my groceries are going up, so your sales tax rev- our sales tax revenue is going up. Probably better than inflation, but a- a- all of it, the revenue and the expense size go up. They don't necessarily go at equal rates, okay? So I, I, I am scared of inflation, but it's not the Sasquatch. It's somewhere between Sasquatch. I am scared of inflation, but it's not the Sasquatch. It's somewhere between Sasquatch and Ewok for me, okay? Understand the issue, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm as afraid of it as you, you guys are, okay? Um, there are other things like gas and whatever that come into effect. I understand that, okay? But ultimately, guys, it's a project that's missing five million dollars of funding. And you're asking us to make a bet of citizens' money on a hope that we'll get these grants and other things. And tell you the truth, the hole may actually be, I'm concerned the hole may actually be bigger than five million dollars. Okay, because some of that money is not money in the bank. It's money promised by other actions, other grants, other fundraising activities that may or may not get the money you're talking about. That we have put in as committed funds. Okay, so I'm really having a hard time with this five million dollar hole and approving a project that we don't know how we're going to fund. Said my piece, we can go from there.
That's for Johnson.
Yeah, the, uh, um, four million dollar King County Aquatics Grant, if we did get it, supposed to come in in September as to whether or not we were awarded, right?
Right, we submitted, we didn't get it, but go ahead.
That would be, I believe, when we find out if we get it.
Right, we, last cycle, we got a million, and so we applying for it again.
We submit in April twenty five, we find out in September twenty.
So I, if that were to occur, uh, based on inflation, that would uh, essentially increase the cost by, I know it's always predicting the future with, uh, um, um. Yeah, crystal balls, there we go. Uh, try to figure it out. Um, yeah, whatever those things are, um. Which is not an exact science, but it should be something like one point three ish million. Those based on my use of the numbers. Uh, if we did four minus that, we still gained money by waiting until then. I know, holding off the project isn't great, but we still would have netted money by going for the King County Aquatics Grant. We did four minus the inflation. So essentially, what I'm saying is that would decrease the five million dollar hole and we would know that we got those funds rather than hoping that we got the funds.
That's what I.
I'd like to go back to Mayor Pro Tem's comments. For me, okay, five point two million, and I've got to add back contribution of two point five because we don't know, and that does not preclude us from building a pool or choosing an operator of the pool. But if we did that, and I believe that our, you know, if we just took round numbers and I'm, I'm in my calculations, thirty seven fifty are the number of homes in so quality approximately, Drew has a better number. I'm, I'm looking at the, the, the reality of the shortfall is probably about eighteen hundred dollars per family that would be essentially bonded. So we're looking, you know, if, if you're doing a bonding over the course of twenty years or whatever, we're really talking about maybe and we can do the calculus to all that, we're, we're talking about eighteen dollars a month sort of impact. But if, if we take a look at the numbers, and my point is this, I'd be a lot more comfortable. We pull out the numbers that we know that are being pledged, but not certain, and that we look at the numbers and see what the real impact is. Because that's the part where I'm, 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 I'm almost there on that. There's other things I'm not at, you know, that comfort level. But I think we need to be a little more intentional on the numbers of what it would look like, whether we're taking a line of credit, whether, you know, there, there are a number of different ways. But those are the things that are rattling around in my little pea brain that's kind of driven by numbers and money and dollar sides. So anyway, those are.
So I think the information was in the matrix, wasn't it, Drew?
Yeah, so well, I'll just go to, well, can I, can I make one?
So we're not, we're talking, we're not talking community bond. We're talking councilmatic bond.
Council manning, yes.
What we will be committing is existing future revenue for this bond. Okay, that, but that means you're, for X amount of money, there are things we are not going to do.
It's also important to point out that this is, this has already been put forth as a bond three times. It's failed every time, and yours is not the only grocery bill that's gone up. Yours too?
I want to address, I mean, that's come up a couple of times. And the last bond was two thousand eight, that's when population was eight thousand. Now we're over fourteen thousand. We've increased seventy two percent in population. And I think has ever, people lived here in two thousand eight. In Suomi, so. Read this. Right. So when it ran, you received fifty three percent of the support. And it was also during the financial crisis. So the subprime mortgages was the issue. And it was also running school bonds, which was school, no, not pools. That was the slogan. The people felt they had to choose between voting for schools or voting for pools. They also ran the bond, like a four lane pool. People wanted a competition sized pool. They didn't want a four lane pool. I voted no, because I wanted a four lane pool. And so we thought that council would bring it back.
You mean you didn't want a four lane pool?
I wanted a competition pool. And I thought com- that council would bring it back. And they didn't bring it back. So I don't think you can s- can you sit here and state that we didn't pass two thousand eight bond, so we shouldn't vote on it tonight? Or actually, in a couple of weeks, because you're not representing them. You're representing our residents. And our residents, we have slides that show you, you know, sixty three percent.
Please show that. Please show that slide.
Dana, do you have that slide? Well.
There it is. Right, yeah.
That's one of them.
Can you read that? Your eyes are better than mine.
Uh, so it states here, expansion of community center and addition of pool. The city's adopted capital improvement plan includes an expansion of the community center and the addition of a swimming pool that would be funded through one time sources to capital revenues and grants. Without, which option below best describes your opinion?
Sorry, you can stop there. Funded by, funded through one time sources of capital revenue and grants. I don't see bond in there. Now, if your argument is that in two thousand eight, the financial picture was, was gloomy and sad, and that's what killed it. But now, two thousand twenty four, when everything's rosy, everybody's going to be happy to, to bond stuff out. Okay, sixty six percent changes markedly soon as you throw in the word bond. Soon as you throw the word bond into that question, you don't have sixty six percent.
But it's not going against property tax. It is paid by REIT. So it's paid by real estate excise tax. And it's people that are buying, selling their homes, so.
And it's being paid by the, other things that we can't do. It's, it's, there's opportunity cost and it, things, other things that we cannot do if we bond out that money.
That's true. And so show me surveys and all those other things we can't do that have the greatest of support from our residents as this.
Show me an honest poll question.
Whoa, 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 wait, okay, one, uh, the one question is unanswerable. We right now cannot sit here and say what we won't do because these funds are encumbered by community center. That's, that's future things, okay? So I, I, the fact, the fact is, there are things we won't, won't be able to do, but we don't know what those are, okay? Um, so we, and, all right, I'll leave it at that because they're in a hand race.
That's what Johnson.
I see a CIP here that goes out to twenty thirty. And, uh, I'm wondering, what is it that we'd like to put on here instead? What is the opportunity lost?
We saw, that's Christian here.
We've never had a lack of CIP.
So, so wherever this falls, we're talking about spending another thirty million dollars for a community expansion. Thirty million dollars for another passion of mine is affordable housing. That will almost buy us, almost buy us a hundred units of affordable housing. So, you know, those are the trade offs. And then when I sit down and talk with people and I asked, I was sitting with a couple that are retired and, and it's like, over the weekend that I'd never met before and asked them. And it's like, it's really interesting when people say, you know, it's not that big of a deal. But to me, it is a big deal because, you know, I, I look at my tax bill and it's like, oh my gosh, I mean, my my taxes have almost tripled since I've moved here. So, you know, it's, it's, are we spending it wisely? And I guess that's what kind of comes down to is, is this the right investment?
City administrator Chambliss.
Um, I just want to be clear on what the, the modified agreement with the operator. How it looked when it last left me. I haven't gotten it back yet. But it wasn't if you can raise this money, you're going to contribute this amount. It was you're going to contribute this amount. What now, if the grant comes through, great, then the grant, they could use a grant to pay for it. But, but the way the agreement is written is they are on the hook for that amount of money. Which is why we felt comfortable putting in as booked revenue.
So I guess I'll just add on top of that. There is indeed a five point two million dollar line of credit that would go into the bond. But we are attempting to fund that bond out of the resources that we currently have available to us in the CIP. So from our forecast that's provided, which is, in essence, this is a financial plan for the next six years. And so indeed, it is a bit of a forecast, I think, overall. So our intention is to use our real estate excise taxes, which includes the buying, selling of homes, and we pay back that bond over a twenty period. The important question, I think, overall is, to a degree, that was off of it. What should city government be involved in? I can look around at other cities and I can see that they have a fully fledged recreational department. In essence, the YMCA certainly acting as our recreational department for the city overall. May not necessarily have the facilities, right, overall, uh, but that is kind of what we're driving towards when it comes to this. We've spent a lot of time and effort, right, on the community center, important. So those trade offs are really, really important to consider. But I do know that people have poured their heart over the past four, five or six years in order to get to this stage. When we talked about two thousand eight, it was a ten point five million dollar capital levy. A ten point five million dollar capital levy that is now five point two million dollar bond for the most part. That back then required a levy rate equal to forty five cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. This is not asking for your property taxes necessarily. This is asking to utilize the real estate excise tax without any sort of tax increases to try to get this across something. We've tried to ideally present a plan that puts your capital programs first. So that was priority number one, was to make sure that those were funded first before we ever considered the community center. Community center was indeed the second one, because we've been spending four to five, six years. We've saved up a considerable amount of money, which really is a credit to all of you. It's a credit to your council members, kind of have that foresight. To start putting that money away to kind of reach this stage. And we are probably at the twenty four mile mark of a marathon, right? In order to actually see something like this completed, so, um, it feels tight. Uh, it certainly does, but I almost think that we should be feeling good that it is tight. It's almost counterintuitive. If I had another four to five million dollars to say, here, let me just allocate to that, then we are probably overtaxing.
Yeah.
The fact that we're having this kind of hard discussion is actually a good sign, and you should be really feeling good about that, I think, overall. What we've tried to do with this is to get you there as much as we possibly can across the line. I wish I had four to five million dollars to kind of plug that five point two million dollar gap, but this is the plan. Probably the best plan for that we have at this moment. There are trade offs they're going to have to make. There's pros and cons to every plan. Um, so I think from our perspective back here, we know how hard that decision is, I think, overall. This ridge, it's twenty five years, right now, this one. Um, this was, yeah, I can go back and I can take a look at the master plan for Ridge One and Ridge Two, and I can see the words recreational center in there. It's not just your community, it's not just a pool, it's not just a couple of cardio rooms. It's also, will eventually become your youth programs. It could eventually become your senior center, your de facto senior center as well. And it's an important element, I think, of what government tends to provide overall. And if you go take a look around you at your fellow cities. Maple Valley has a Parks and Recreation Department, Isiqua does, Covington Recreation, Redmond Recreation, Bellevue Recreation. It's not out of the line of purview of government to be funding a community center such as this. And so with that said, I guess I'll just turn it back over.
Point, point of order, and, and I'm sorry, I, I'm not trying to cut you off. We're past nine thirty and per our, um, code or per code or per our rules. Um, we, we need to extend if we're going past ten o'clock at this point.
Is there a motion?
I thought we were already scheduled to go to ten. Am I remembering that wrong?
I.
Well, were you making a motion? With, so with that emotion.
So, so move that we go past ten.
That's what you know.
Um, so given consideration that we're not actually being asked to adopt this but to have discussion, which I've intended to incite. I think we've had that. Um, if we were to look at, are there additional things we want to have discussion, we may not go past ten. So what?
We do have an executive session.
Yeah. Let's get to it, uh.
So is that a second?
Second that.
Was there a second? No, he did.
Not, not to the.
Died without a second.
I'll, I'll second it. I'll second him, yeah.
Okay, so it's been second by Congressman Vincent. So all in favor, at least any past ten, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oppose, say no.
It passed four to three.
So there's four ayes?
Five to two.
It was a very quiet.
Reluctant eye. Every extension should be done in that.
Okay, so, Mr. Chambliss.
Yeah, sorry, I'll keep it short. Uh, one of the things I touched on on Saturday was the economic opportunities that this facility would create for Central Street. One thing I neglected to bring up is the actual jobs it's going to create for our local teenagers. Um, I'm, I didn't raise my teenagers here in this town, but I'm assuming teenagers have to go to Isiqua or North Bend really to find a job at McDonald's or et cetera. These would be jobs here in this community and when kids have money in this, in this community. Um, so that also is another positive impact that this, this brings. Um, I know the YMCA had those numbers. I wanted to say it was about fifty thirty eight. Um, and, and that's a lot of, of more teaching for the youth about responsibility, et cetera. So this project doesn't, this hits so many different levels. I'm going to leave it at that.
That's for Johnson.
Uh, yeah, I mean, if we were going to, uh, I, in, in ideal world, due to our schedule to get to a budget this year, uh, adopt this nonutility CIP at our next, uh, meeting. Uh, we'd have to come, uh, come to some decisions about, uh, what to do about, uh, the community center expansion and its fun and funding. Um, there are a number of options that, uh, Jewish showed us before of what we could do. And, uh, I think that we could continue talking tonight, although it is getting later and I would like to get to executive session or over the next couple of weeks, uh, kind of start thinking about what do we do about it?
Any other comments? Right, so. Right, so I think moving on. Thank you.
I do have one more question.
Council Vincent?
The kind of bond that you're talking about, one that's paid through REIT. Is that something that voters can vote on? Or can that solely be voted on by the council? Can a bond measure be put forward where the funding of the bond measure is the same way that we're talking about doing a council manic bond? Is it possible to structure a bond that goes to a ballot like that?
I'll have to look into it and get back to you.
Usually it sells, those texts are property tax.
We, yeah, it's not, it's, it's kind of a sense of the community vote. And we could ask them if they like Chihuahuas over Dalmatians.
Don't do that.
So, I mean, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a true community bond vote. It would just be we, the council, asking the community by way of vote, we'd have to pay for it. There's expense to say, which way you think we ought to go.
That's not what I'm asking.
You're asking.
Bond is a council manic bond. It's done by council.
I do get that a council manic bond is a council manic bond. That's a very strong point. What I'm asking is can a, can a bond voted on by voters be structured that way? That's the question that I'm asking.
I'm going to him, he's going to do homework at that stage because I'm.
Councilman.
Okay, so I think there's three options. One is we can do council manic. The second one is we could do a bond put forth to the voters. If it gets turned down, if it doesn't get sixty percent, we're done. Or we can have an advisory vote put to the voters and it comes up fifty eight percent. It's up to us whether we move forward. I mean, tho, those are the three three options.
Sort of. But if we waited for the results of a vote, which wouldn't be for some time from now, then we're going to be dealing with this inflation issue where we're going to start cutting into the usefulness of the King County Aquatics Grant.
Don't worry, it's just an Ewok.
Somewhere between.
Well, and the other issue I think too is that was the way that we'd have to move forward. If we were going to move forward, we would miss the deadlines that would end up driving up the costs of actually building it because you have to order certain equipment ahead of time, and then you might miss your dry period and you don't want to build a pool in November because, you know, you're going to get that.
Right, I think a lot would have to be pre-ordered this fall.
Pushing construction back by at least another year, and so you'd be dealing with the additional costs of construction. Unfortunately, right.
What I've got up here is basically the two types of general obligation debt that was presented by our financial advisor last time. There's the limited tax general obligation bond, which is what we presented and proposed as a part of the CIP, which would be secured by the full faith credit of the city. Generally, overall, however, other non-tax revenues may be used such as the real estate excise tax to pay down that debt service and it requires just really approval by city council. If it's an unlimited tax general obligation bonds, then usually there's a source repayment that's tied to that, which in many but I've only seen so far, and David can correct me, be seen anything different, is usually an excess property tax levy attached to that. In this case, we're not asking for an excess property tax levy, and so I'm not aware of a situation which a city has previously just put a bond up and said, we've got it covered, you know, or ideally, we're just going to use the money, our real estate excise taxes to pay for it, but there's no tax increase associated with it. I haven't seen anything like that in my experience so far, so.
I'm at, I'm just asking if it's possible.
Yeah.
Anything else? Otherwise, how about if we forego the mayor's, the commission and the city administrator's reports and move on to executive session? Okay, all right. So we will have an executive session pursuant to RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero one B to consider the selection. For actual or potential litigation.
Actually, just some.
And we will need approximately how many minutes?
End up doing the cascade.
So we'll start at twenty minutes and who shall attend? We had a city attorney Lenahan. City administrator Chambliss. Our finance director, Drew Batte, and our chief, Brian Lynch. Okay, so let's take a. Okay, so we will go until ten twenty. So we will, and we do not need to be online. We will continue to have the meeting here. And then afterwards, no action is anticipated, correct? Anticipated following conclusion of the executive session and the council will adjourn directly from the closed session and not return to open session. So the city clerk will confirm of the concluding time for the closed session. Thank you, so.
Are we taking a five minute recess or we're going directly into?
If we can, go directly into it.
Fifteen minute nap?
No, there's no nap.